And we are recording.
All right, welcome everybody to the November Board of Trustees meeting. This is the Executive Committee. Want to call this meeting to order and just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. Madam Secretary, if we could take a roll, please.
Sisneros?
Here.
Good?
Here.
So well, not present. Stallings?
Present.
Trejo? Yeah, the Corn Chair.
Great, thank you. And no offense to trustee Cuser, but I think we need to demote her as a non-panelist for this meeting.
Um, yes, and then trustee Cuser will bring you back in for the discussion of four point one.
Right, thank you.
No problem. Okay.
All right. Next on the agenda is a call for public comment. And before we begin public comment, I'd like to remind everyone that under Bagley Keen Open Meeting Act, public comments must pertain to items that are on the agenda or be related to matters that are within the jurisdiction of this agency. Specifically, the Board Executive Committee is responsible for the effective functioning, maintenance and development of the board, oversight of strategic and essential operation matters, including legislative relations and appointments to volunteer entities. And as the Chair of the Board of Executive Committee, I reserve the right to limit each speaker's time to two minutes or to close the public comment period after a certain amount of time or after the first 100 speakers, whichever occurs first. I don't think that we have any advanced sign up, so we will call on members of the public in the order that they appear in the attendee pool. For those of you participating via Zoom, you should have a function for virtually raising your hand. There's a hand icon that should appear at the bottom center of your screen. If you wish to address the board, please click on the hand icon now. And State Bar staff will call on you in order that the hands are raised. For those of you participating via phone, you may virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine, that is the star key, the number nine. Doing so will alert staff if you'd like to make comments and State Bar staff will call on you and open your microphones to address the board. Uh, for those of you who are participating via a noticed location, please alert the State Bar staff member present in the room that you would like to make comment. So due to time restrictions, we cannot allow more than three minutes per speaker. Please note the staff will have an on-screen timer, uh, on-screen countdown timer visible to all attendees during the duration of your public comment. Timer's three-minute countdown will begin as soon as you start your comment. The on-screen timer will flash out the final 10 seconds. All right, um, Madam Secretary, are there any members of the public wishing to address this Executive Committee?
Yes, we have several members, um, who'd like to address this committee. First is Ray Hayden. Ray, your microphone has been enabled and you should be able to address the committee.
Thank you so much. I hope you're feeling better real soon. I hear the scratchiness. Uh, I just want to confirm that, uh, what you just said on the subject matter for this particular part of the committee that my comments really have to do with the review of the experimental exam we just did. I have good things to say. I just want to make sure that it's for the main meeting that's coming up later in the day. That would be correct, right?
So you can give public comments at that meeting. That starts at approximately 11 o'clock this morning.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and I'll keep that in mind for future meetings.
Thank you. All right, next, please.
Hi, good morning. Um, I just wanted to make public comment. I saw on your agenda that you had, um, something to do with conflict of interest. I, I don't remember what number it was. I don't have it pulled up in front of me. I'm just concerned that you have a couple, um, members of the bar, um, two names, Heidi Soto, um, Felstein Soto, rather, and Kevin James. It seems that, um, that there's a conflict of interest because they are seen hobnobbing in pictures on, on the internet with members of the Church of Scientology and front groups that, um, that, that are just trying to have some collusion with not giving permits to people that are applying to have protests on El Run Hubbard Way. I think that something should be added.
Identified as Amy's iPhone.
Yes, it is.
Four point two relates to conflict of interest code for designated employees that the employees of the State Bar.
Well, I'm just wanting to add that, that it should also be added, the people should be added that are actually on the board. There should be a code for them as well because they're, they're interfering with the First Amendment and people's right to protest. And also they're not even enforcing the law. There's a conflict of interest of on enforcing the law against, for, for restraining orders against a person that's harassing a minor. And she, and Heidi Soto was not doing her job. So there's two people that you have to look in Heidi Soto and Kevin James, and I yield back my time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, public commenter.
Next, we have Bob Ferris. Your microphone has been enabled.
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, so I am here because I want to discuss the attorney behavior of Stephen Michael Tamer, license 159828. He has repeatedly filed bogus motions before the Superior Court of Los Angeles over at the North Hill. Uh, he's also a known attorney for a known child predator named Anthony Di Amato Jr., uh, who continues to harass a minor. Uh, both are affiliated with Scientology. And Mr. Tamer in the past has also been previously, um, punished for failure to pay fees as well as failure to show and just a bunch of other highly unethical behavior. In fact, during a hearing, uh, with the Honorable Judge Ochoa, this guy showed up initially without a shirt on, had to take about 10 to 15 minutes of the court's time to get ready and somehow thought that he can just show up to a court hearing without a shirt on, even if it's appearing remotely. Uh, secondly, it's a name you've already heard of, Kendrick Moxon, who has repeatedly committed perjury as well as outright character assassination on many attempts. He's a Scientology lawyer. His name and license has already been brought up several times. Uh, probably the most important attorney that I want to bring up today for the purpose of filing not only a complaint but demanding a public hearing be taken is Robert E. Mangels, uh, who I believe when I heard yesterday, his license was shared out for outright assaulting a woman, uh, during a child bride hearing. Again, another Scientology attorney, you know, these guys are just tip of the iceberg, just the, the most beautiful role model society, assaulting women and endangering the lives of children. This guy outright assaulted a Jane Doe witness, uh, during a child bride case and was allowed to walk away and still to this day, no disciplinary action has been listed on their, uh, on their bar license over at the apps.calbar.ca.gov portal. I want to see these folks go and have their day and be officially recognized as discipline being handed down. If you need my email, it's filmdepolicusa@protonmail.com. And the public deserves to see these people have a public hearing on the revocation of their bottle license. Enough is enough. We have the CPR records as well as countless other information leaks from lieutenants of LAPD and several other high-ranking members, even judges in the Honorable Superior Court of Los Angeles are on our side. Scientology right now is all in seven. They've lost all seven cases against these public critics of Scientology. Enough is enough. The courts are on our side. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public commenter.
Next, we have Barry Bader. Your microphone has been enabled.
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I just want to bring up, uh, so I am one of the affiliates with Anthony Di Amato Jr. And it seems to me that these guys have gone on to these different Zoom calls. For whatever reason, they seem to think that they can go ahead and slander our good name. Uh, you know, despite the fact that we have various child predators on our side, Scientology is in fact not a cult. Uh, we do in fact not have any ties to various government officials despite paying off the LAFD and the LASD. And in fact, Mr. Kendrick Moxon, despite committing perjury on several counts, that's totally acceptable. You can see by his track record of being allowed to practice the law over 30 years that it's totally acceptable practice for assassinate character, slander people and outright commit perjury without facing any sort of disciplinary action. And of course, assault women in the court of law. Are you kidding me? Totally acceptable. If a deputy LASD found that there's no wrongdoing for a woman to be thrown to the wall as she's trying to enter an elevator for a child bride case, then you bitch your ass. That's absolutely acceptable. And he's making a laughing stock out of you guys, but that's what we pay you for. That's what the money is for. And you think that we's our case is just about the bribes and graft? No, the feds are using that case to go after all the P Diddy affiliates and all them are linked to Scientology. Wake the fuck up and do your job. This is ridiculous. It's making a mockery out of you guys. Mockery out of this board.
Sir, I'm going to remind you to keep your comments, uh, to the relevant jurisdiction of the State Bar and to also refrain from offensive speech. All right. Do you wish to add anything else? All right, going once, going twice. All right, it looks like Barry Bader has ceased to the public comment. Um, I see that we still have a number of raised hands. Um, and in the interest of running this meeting efficiently and getting back on schedule, I will reduce public comment period. Uh, or the, the time in which individuals have to give public comment to two minutes per speaker. So we could identify the next speaker, please. Madam Secretary?
Anthony Di Amato. Your microphone has been enabled.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi. Uh, yeah, this is Anthony Di Amato Jr. Uh, I'm over here in the LA area. And it just seems like my attorney is, uh, they're, they're taking him to, to, to the grinder here. Mr. Stephen Tamer is an honorable, uh, an honorable attorney. Now, it's fine that he shows up with his shirt off in front of a Judge Ochoa. It's totally fine. And I totally haven't placed several dozen swatting calls on a minor's house and threatened to repeatedly rape him and his mother several times without a bench war being issued to me and without city attorney doing her damn job to prosecute me. Now, I'm only a 54-year-old man where my address is known and all my whereabouts and affiliations of Scientology are known. But it's fine. I'm a child predator. I can get away with this shit because that's what LA is all about. That's what this board is all about. That's what we pay you guys for. Thank you for allowing me, a child predator, to continually stalk and harass a minor as well as on camera several times issuing death threats to every other Scientology critic. Thank you for that. I really appreciate that. You are allowing me to get away with several law violations and so was the LAPD, the LASD, but not the courts. The courts are on the critic's side. But you guys, you guys are still taking my bribes and for that, I thank you. And so does every other chomo and child predator out there. Thank you for protecting chomos. You're a wonderful asset.
I'm going to remind you to keep your comments, uh, to items that are on this agenda and within the purview and jurisdiction of the board. If there's ongoing, um, issues, uh, emergency issues, you're directed to contact the law enforcement. Do you have any other comments? All right, Anthony Di Amato, do you have any other comments? Going once, going twice. All right, let's move on to the next public commenter, please.
Next, we have Kendrick Moxon. Your microphone has been enabled.
Yeah, I just want to say years ago when I made that comment on ABC, uh, uh, that topless dancer, I knew that was character assassination, but I said it anyway.
Sir, I'm going to direct you to keep your comments to, uh, the purview of this committee and, uh, an agenda item. With that in mind, do you have any other comments? All right, sir, if you do have any other comments, please reactivate your microphone. All right, going once, going twice. All right, can we go back, go to the next, uh, public commenter, please?
Next, we have Yvonne. Your microphone has been enabled.
Thank you, and I'm going to really try to be on topic here. Uh, or within your purview. The, uh, organization known as Scientology has specific, um, contracts, which I believe are something that this board should be able to review and, uh, write legislation to uh, nullify those contracts. They include billion-year labor contracts which employ people for $50 a week. Um, they have, uh, non-disclosure agreements that have penalties of $100,000 if members say the word Xenu and, uh, eh, eh, at the inappropriate time. They have forced arbitration, uh, and they have a dog line, a policy of not allowing members to report crimes. These things are documented within their own text and, and, and within their history and they, they complicate court cases um, for the victims. I believe that this board has the authority to review the documents that they bring into court and, uh, you know, depend on what judge you, you get assigned to. The rulings are all over the place, all over the country, you know, that eh, in, in one jurisdiction, they, they toss out the contracts and another one, they uphold them. They are forcing the.
Yep, 10 seconds.
Okay. Yeah, they are forcing the victims to go into arbitration with the people that have, uh, um.
All right, ma'am, your time is up. Thank you for your comment.
Next.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Next, we have Mark Choney's. Microphone has been enabled.
All right, yeah, I don't really know. I want to make a general comment, but I don't know who to really speak to because I've been speaking and calling and I don't get no, uh, calls back or nothing from, through to even the LAPD. Anthony, Anthony Di Amato, AKA Zero Dark Tony on YouTube has, uh, continued to harass minors, break, uh, ROs and the police say that they don't have one existing and it's clearly one existing. I have the number and it's been repeated over the meetings and he continues to file false police, uh, reports all over.
Sir, I just want to remind you to keep your comments within the purview of the jurisdiction of State Bar and the purview of.
Yeah, I understand. I understand what you're saying, but where else we supposed to go? I don't even know where to go. He's putting false court, he's filing false court papers, putting false names on there. Eh, eh, he's like, he's wasting resources and time and making a mockery out of the system. I'm trying to find out who can I talk to then? Because we don't get no act right from LAPD. They cover them up because he's with the cult of Scientology. So where do I go for help?
So, sir, if you wish to file a complaint against a lawyer, then the State Bar of California receives those complaints. Receives those complaints and will investigate those complaints. So if it is against a lawyer, you can file a complaint. Please go to our website for the filing procedures.
He has an attorney by the last name of Tamer that's filing it for him. That's false. He's filing false police, uh, court papers. I don't know his first name, but y'all can look it up.
Sir, if you wish to file a complaint against a specific lawyer, there's information on the State Bar website on how to make that, uh, make that happen.
Well, I don't know how to do all that, but he's put my name in the, in the court proceedings. That's what I'm saying. That's why I'm upset. So who do I go to? You saying all that, but I need some help because he's been doing it for a period of months now.
Sir, staff will attempt to send you a link and how to file a, uh, report and a complaint with our office. All right, your public comment is ended. Thank you.
We do not have any additional members of the public who wish to address this committee.
All right, thank you. We'll close the, uh, public comment period. We'll go on to item one, which is Chair's Report. And I will, uh, reserve that report until the, uh, full Board of Trustees meeting. Going on to item number two, and I would note for the record that trustee So well, uh, joined us, uh, has joined us, so if we can mark him present. Welcome. And then, uh, let's go to number two, open session minutes, uh, item 2.1 approval of September 19, 2024 open session minutes. Are there any corrections or modifications to the open session minutes? And if not, may I have a first and a second?
Uh, I'll, I'll move the minutes.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. First by trustee So well, second by trustee Good. Now have a roll call vote, please.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
So well?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays. Minutes are adopted.
All right, thank you. That is the end of item two, going to item three. There's nothing on consent calendar. Going to, uh, item four, this is our business calendar. Item 4.1 is a review and discussion of five-year, uh, sunset review recommendations for sub-entities. And this is being presented by Board Secretary Luisa Arpetian. And, uh, this is for information and presentation purposes only. There's no resolution um, at the end of this, uh, item. So, uh, Ms. Arpetian, please take us away.
Thank you. Good morning, committee members. This agenda item, as, as Chair Stallings said, is informational only and is intended to provide an update on the five-year sunset review of State Bar sub-entities. Share preliminary recommendations and request committee discussion on next steps. As background, this review focuses on the five non-statutory sub-entities. California Board of Legal Specialization, Client Security Fund Commission, Committee on State Bar Accredited and Registered Schools, Council on Access and Fairness, and the Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct. Together, these sub-entities currently involve 42 volunteers, while the six statutory sub-entities include 96 volunteers. This sunset review stems from recommendations of the 2017 Governance in the Public Interest Task Force and subsequent board action to improve efficiency and align operations with the State Bar's mission. Since our last update in September, we've made significant progress. Surveys were conducted with current and former commissioners as well as programmatic staff to ana-analyze the efficiency overlaps and necessity of each sub-entity. Preliminary recommendations have been developed and I'll summarize those now. For the California Board of Legal Specialization, the recommendation is to eliminate this body and reassign its tasks. Appeals related to exam violations and testing accommodations would transfer to the Committee of Bar Examiners. Identification of new specialties would be managed by staff in collaboration with external legal groups such as the California Lawyers Association. Outreach and program updates would transition to the Office of Strategic Communications. For the Client Security Fund Commission, the recommendation is to eliminate this body as well. Objections to tentative decisions or notices of intention to pay would be handled by two board members who would provide recommendations to the full board, similar to how attorney fee waiver requests are processed. For the Committee of State Bar Accredited and Registered Schools, the recommendation is to retain this body with some operational improvements. These include broadening the definition of accreditation experts, reducing term lengths and enhancing coordination between CS bars and the Committee of Bar Examiners. And for the Council on Access and Fairness and Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct, we do not have recommendations at the moment. Um, those are pending as we wait additional input from surveys. Following today's discussion, we'll refine these recommendations and present finalized proposals for approval in early 2025. I'd also like to acknowledge Vice Chair Sisneros and trustee Cuser for their active involvement in this process. These recommendations have been presented to both and they are available today to provide input. Thank you, and I welcome your thoughts and questions.
All right, thank you for that. Anybody have any questions or trustee, uh, Cuser, vice chair Sisneros, any comments at the outset? We certainly support the recommendations.
If it's appropriate, I could, um, speak a little bit about next steps as, uh, the item indicates. Um, there's additional work to do, uh, with respect to co-op and co-prac. So we'll be bringing those recommendations forward. And then for those where we, um, made recommendations, particularly, um, with respect to CBLS, obviously, we need to engage CBE now as we are recommending that they take on some of the, um, workload. Uh, so we'll be doing that as well. I just want to recognize Luisa for her great work on this.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I think that was one of my main overarching questions is what sort of outreach has been done to the various, um, entities such as CBE that would potentially be taking on more of a, um, workload if we've been engaged with leadership um, about that potential?
We haven't yet met with CBE. We've met with the leadership of CBLS and CSF, but not, um, CBE.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you, uh, Luisa, vice chair Sisneros and trustee Cuser for your work. And this is a, a lot of, uh, a lot of work on your part and also Leah Tierstout. All right, moving on to 4.2, this is approval of proposed changes of conflict of interest code for designated employees. And, uh, this is being presented by, uh, Attorney Brady Dewar from our Office of General Counsel. So welcome, Mr. Dewar.
Uh, good morning. I, um, am I live at, I, I was, uh, thrown out of the meeting for a second there. Chair Stallings, can you hear me?
I can. Welcome.
Excellent. Uh, good morning, uh, Executive Board. Pursuant to the Political Reform Act, all state agencies must have a conflict of interest code naming employees and other positions that involve making or participating in the making of decisions that affect financial interests. The State Bar has two codes, one for the Board of Trustees and one for employees, sub-entity members and contractors. The second code, known as the Conflict of Interest Code for Designated Employees of the State Bar of California, is the subject of this agenda item. In addition to naming positions, the code for each position must list disclosure categories, which are the types of financial interests that could be affected by each particular position's decisions. People in these positions must then report financial interests falling within their disclosure categories on their Form 700 statements. For instance, all employees and volunteers named in the State Bar's Conflict of Interest Code for Designated Employees disclose under category two, which essentially covers California attorneys and other individuals and entities in the California legal industry. This is appropriate as all of our decision-making positions make some decisions that could affect the financial interests of California attorneys. Every year, uh, we in the Office of General Counsel in conjunction with the, uh, uh, human resources review the code and update it to reflect new positions or title changes, changes to the regulations that set forth the substance of the Conflict of Interest Code, and if needed, to make substantive changes to the disclosure categories or the code language itself. Last year, as part of our Conflicts of Interest and Ethics Enhancement Review, we made numerous substantive changes to the code, including rewriting several disclosure categories and adding State Bar-specific language to the code itself, such as instructions for how filers can assert privilege where attorney-client privilege could prohibit them from making a full disclosure of their reportable financial interests. This year, after our review, uh, only minor changes were needed. In essence, these changes, uh, in the proposed code before you now are, uh, just to update the code to reflect new and changed employee titles over the past year. These changes do not involve any policy calls, but rather simply reflect additions to and changes to State Bar employee positions that have already occurred. Um, as an aside, I wanted to note that pursuant to the Political Reform Act and as noted in the code itself, hires into these new positions during the past year were required to begin their Form 700 reporting immediately without waiting for this code update. This code update, uh, before you today simply formalizes tho-those disclosure requirements. With that, uh, after I address any questions you may have, we request that the Board Executive Committee approve the resolution set forth in the staff report, which recommends to the board adoption of the updated Conflict of Interest Code for Designated Employees of the State Bar.
All right. Great. Thank you, Brady. And just as a quick follow-up, does this need to be sent out for public comment? Are we okay approving it?
So, no, it does not. Um, in, in fact, because this isn't actually a rule, it's not required to be, uh, submit, uh, sent out for public comment, um, in any event. However, our, our practice over the past many years. In any event, however, our practice over the past many years has been to send it out for public comment if we're making substantive changes. So we did that last year. But here, where we're simply making, you know, basically clerical changes to reflect changes in positions that have already happened, we have not sent out for public comment when it's just those minor changes.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. I may have a first. If there's no further comments, I may have a first and a second.
I'll some move.
This is Arnie. I'll second.
All right, thank you. First by trustee Good, second by trustee So well. Everybody's had a chance to review the resolution. I may have a roll call vote, please.
The Snarrows?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
So well?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Brady, and to your team. Appreciate it. All right, that concludes the Board Executive's agenda. We will adjourn into Finance Committee. Trustee So well, are we okay going right into finance? Are you open?
I'm ready. I'm ready to roll. My Chair Stallings, I think we were originally scheduled for ten. Is that right? I just want to make sure that, you know, other Finance Committee members. It's a little early, so I'm not sure if we, if everybody is on already or not.
May I? We actually have to wait until ten, because that's when we agenda is the start of the meeting.
All right, so we will be in recess then until ten o'clock. So we'll see in about eighteen minutes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. You know, when you're... Good morning, everyone. Are we good to go?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November fourteenth meeting of the State Bar's Finance Committee. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. Can I get our committee coordinator, Sam Tesoro, to please call the roll so we can establish a forum?
Yes, Barahona?
Hillary?
Not present? Winaventura?
Present.
Grande? Grande, not present. So well?
Present.
Trejo?
Present.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum? Okay, very good. Our next item on the agenda is the, is the call for public comment. But before we enter the, the public comment period, I'd like to remind everyone that under the Bagley-Keen Open Meetings Act, public comments must pertain to items that are on the agenda or related to matters that are within the purview of the jurisdiction of, of this agency. Specifically, the, the Finance Committee leads, leads the oversight, review, and development of the state bar's budget. The Finance Committee does not have authority over attorney, or attorney discipline, and there are no attorney discipline matters on the, the agenda for today's meeting. So I can't emphasize enough that during this public comment period, we're going to have to adhere to, to the statutory sort of guidelines presented under Bagley-Keen that, that we, that the folks that are going to address this, the committee must adhere to and speak to items that are on the agenda or within the purview of the Finance Committee. So with that, let me just sort of outline just sort of the rules of public comment. And that would be that you can raise your hand with, if you're on Zoom to, to alert the, the committee coordinator that you wish to speak. You're going to have three minutes in which to speak. If you are calling in, you can use the star nine function to, to request to, to speak. And would also just ask any members of the, of the committee if there are, that are located at a remote site. If you have folks that are, are members of the public that wish to address the committee, that, that you alert, that the committee coordinator, that there are folks there that wish to, to address the committee. So with that being said, Sam, do we have members of the public that wish to address the Finance Committee today?
Yes, we do have a couple, but I'd like to say for the record that trustee Grande has joined us. So the first commenter is Janet Wayland.
Ms. Wayland? Please, you have, you have three minutes.
Yes, can you, can you hear me?
We absolutely can hear you.
Is this where I go to bring my bag of money for the board? I, I just want to make sure. Is this where I drop off my bag of money? Is, I, I talked to Skip. He, he told me to come here. Do I, do I give you guys the bag of money?
Ms. Wayland, I'm trying to, to figure out how your comments pertain to the work of the Finance Committee, which is before us today.
Yes, this is the Office of Special Affairs. I am the agent-at-large that has been harassing Scientology protesters, and I just want to make sure that you keep getting my bribes. So is this where I give you the bag of money?
Ms. Wayland, I do not see how your comments pertain to the work of the Finance Committee today, unless you can attach those comments to one of the items before the, before the committee today. I think we're going to have to terminate your public comment period. Would you like to continue?
Yes, I'll make sure to drop it off at your office. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, Sam? Sam, we can't hear you.
Next, we have Robert Mangles.
Mr. Mangles? You have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Absolutely. You, you are, you're being heard.
Yeah, so I just, I just want to make sure. Is this where I drop off the bag of money?
Mr. Mangles, I think we just heard that, that those same comments from the previous speaker. Unless you have comments that are relevant to the, the agenda items before the Finance Committee today, I think your comments are out of order.
Yeah, but I talked to the Sheriff's Department, and they said they're all set. They got my bag of money. So I just want to make sure. Did you guys get it? I checked with my clerk, and she told me that I got to check with your office first. So is this where I drop off the bag of money? I was just checking here.
Mr. Mingles, thank you for your comment. Sam, next?
We have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay.
All right, one, one last minute. And Erin Schroder?
Hi, yes. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I confess, this is the first time I've joined a meeting and have spoken, so forgive me if you have, you may have questions for me. But I, I have tried to navigate the, through the bar system. I've been an attorney since 2007. And there was a new requirement, as you know, in terms of the Client Trust Account Protection Program. And I did not receive the emails, for whatever reason, about doing that in the timeframe that the, the bar required. And I, I did do it, but I, there was a late fee that was applied. And I didn't realize that I needed to pay the late fee. And long story short, now there's, you know, a notation on my, my state bar profile that is, you know, quite concerning. And I've emailed the bar several times. And I understand that the state bar is considering a procedure in which there, there could be the removal of that. And so that's very important to me. And I did my best to look at the agenda. And it did look like, I'm looking, for example, at four point nine, that there was perhaps that this was maybe the venue in which this was being considered. And so I just wanted to indicate that I, I believe I can't be the only person that this has occurred with. And it's a new, a new rule, and it is quite concerning to myself after practicing law for almost twenty years to have this, you know, this reference. I know it's just an administrative reference, but I take it quite seriously. And, you know, it wasn't, certainly no clients were compromised in any way. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention, your attention. I hope I'm in the right venue. If not, perhaps you could direct me where to go. I confess, it's not that easy to navigate through if this is the first time you're doing it. where to go. I confess, it's not that easy to navigate through if this is the first time you're doing it. So you know, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions as well about this. So I it looks like I have thirty seconds left. And with that, I'll conclude. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Schroder. Aleah or Eileen, is it possible that somebody from the from the staff might be able to follow up directly with with her to to assist her in terms of the questions that she posed and helping to sort of navigate the issue that she raised?
Sure, but the the board itself is hearing an item on website removal of things like administrative suspensions, what she's referencing later this afternoon. So you'll be weighing in on that.
So do so just stay put in this spot?
Sure, you you can, or you could log on later and make public comment to the board. The board will be addressing the issue of website removal of the the kind of notation that you're concerned about later this afternoon.
Oh, okay. And do we know what time exactly or a rough estimate?
No, public comment for the board will probably be around eleven fifteen or so.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I appreciate very much your time.
Sam, any additional public commenters?
Uh, no, there are no other hands raised.
All right, and trustee members, anyone at your location wishing to to speak to the members of the Finance Committee? Okay, seeing none, I think we can proceed with the with the agenda items before us. I have nothing in the way of a of a chair's report, a chair's report today. I think the next item on the agenda will be will be the minutes from our last meeting. I would just ask, are there any corrections or modifications to the open session meetings from our prior meeting? And if not, can I get a member of the committee to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Once we.
Motion to approve minutes. Okay. Mr. Buena Ventura moves. I get a second, please?
A second.
Mr. Trejo seconds. Sam, would you would you call the roll, please?
Yes, but I'd like to say for the record that trustee Barahona has now joined us. Barahona?
Aye.
Winaventura?
Aye.
Grande?
Abstain.
Abstain. Trejo?
Aye.
And Soell?
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstain, and zero nays. The minutes are adopted.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is our consent calendar. There are two items on the consent calendar. Any member of the committee wishing to to pull an item from the consent calendar and and have it heard? Seeing none? Can I get a a motion to approve today's consent calendar?
I move to approve.
All right, trustee Grande moves to approve the consent counter. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Mr. Trejo seconds. Sam, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Barahona?
Aye.
I'm in there.
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Soell?
I'm an aye.
Five ayes and zero nays. The motion carries.
All right, thank you. First item of of business is the the agenda item related to lower referral service recertification fee increases. And I see Ms. Doherty is here to to present that item. So Erica, you're on.
Great, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. First of all, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Erica Doherty, the Program Director of the State Bar's Office of Professional Competence. And I'm here to discuss the proposed increase of recertification fees for the Lawyer Referral Service Program. The existing recertification fees have not changed since nineteen ninety-five, and that's because they were historically capped by a statute, and those fees are currently set at one percent of gross revenue with a maximum cap of ten thousand dollars for a certified LRS. And in two thousand twenty-two, just for a little context here, the CFO recommended that these fees be increased as part of the larger review of all of the programmatic costs at the state bar. And then relatedly, in two thousand twenty-three, the state auditor also recommended that these fees be increased. At that time, we could not do so because of that statutory cap. But as part of this year's fee bill, AB thirty-two seventy-nine, that statutory cap was removed, and the amended statute authorizes the state bar to set recertification fees. We are seeking an increase of from one percent to one point five percent of gross revenue, and then changing that step that that cap. So it would be from ten thousand dollars up to fifteen thousand dollars for nonprofit LRSs, and from ten thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars for for-profit LRSs. If approved, these adjustments are expected to increase the annual LRS revenue, but there will still be a program deficit, and I do want to just kind of explain why for a moment. We did solicit input in regards to several possibilities for a fee increase amongst the thirty-seven existing certified LRSs, and we received thirteen responses. Several did acknowledge the fact that there has not been an increase in nearly thirty years as it relates to the amounts that could be charged. Obviously, the revenue has increased for these programs over time. But several did express concerns that any increase could negatively impact their operations, their ability to fund essential services that they offer, particularly those nonprofit LRSs, and some indicated that it could result in an LRS closure, if possible. And so acknowledging these concerns, staff did recommend a relatively modest increase, although I think the LRS's data is pretty significant. And we recommend also that it be revisited in three years after we've had time to see kind of the impact of this change, including whether or not there's an increase in applications for fee waivers to this program that we do offer the people can apply, and we do approve those fee waivers on a case-by-case basis at this time. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I see, Mr. Moide, I see that you've joined us as well. Anything that you you feel like you need to add?
Thank you for the opportunity, but no, Erica did a great job.
All right. Questions from from committee members? Just just real quick, I know that this particular fee sounds like it requires sort of statutory changes in order for it to be increased. I know later on in the agenda, we do have fees that are also sort of subject to a CPI indexing. And I'm just wondering whether or not, I know we indicated we need to revisit this in in three years, but during that three-year time period, is this is this fee also subject to that fall under the purview of the of the CPI increase or no?
I can answer that. So this one is not recommended to be tagged to the CPI increase, so that approximate three percent or so, because it's based on a percentage. And so the challenge in calculating that would would be would exist essentially. So it would go, you know, for example, if it was pegged, it'd be one point five oh three perhaps, or one point five three and such. And so we thought it would make more sense to instead leave it as is, and then perhaps for this one propose incremental changes over time.
Very good. Other committee members' questions?
I just I had one question, Chair. In terms of, I think the state auditor recommended closer to a four percent increase, unless I read that incorrectly. And so I'm curious, I understand that there is an impact particularly to nonprofits in this area, but we will still be in a in a deficit, even in a smaller deficit with increasing this. My my curiosity is, can we increase this over time to try to close that deficit in the next three to five years? Is that a feasible plan? And I'm just curious how. So that's one question. And my second question is, is there anything we could do in particular for nonprofits in this area that provide these critical services?
I can answer both of those questions. So part part one of your question, it was actually the CFO who recommended that four percent increase, and that was to make the program revenue neutral. And so it would require, and that was four percent with the some version of a cap involved as well, to make the program revenue neutral now would require a two point two five percent revenue cost for these programs with no statutory cap. And what that could mean, there's some programs that have a lot of revenue, and there are some programs that have no revenue at all. And so some programs would be, you know, hundred thousand dollars a year to be recertified without a statutory cap, which didn't really seem appropriate, frankly. And so that's that part of it. As it relates to nonprofits, we have been engaging with many LRSs more recently over the past year or so to figure out how to assist these programs with a goal of promoting access for individuals who are seeking an attorney. And so we have made some changes. We conducted a town hall last week, actually, to kind of collaborate with these LRSs to further increase their ability to offer more services, and we've changed some things on the state bar website as well. But this is an ongoing conversation that we did start about a year ago that we hope to continue to have with these.
Kathy, I would just add, you know, certainly we can reassess the fee structure. I think what you're referring to is the state auditor definitely recommended that we charge fees to achieve full cost recovery. And there's just certain areas where, for policy reasons, as you're hearing, it just, you know, it doesn't make sense to do that. But some of the work Erica described is ultimately designed in part to help these organizations become more viable. And then I think modification of the fees would be a bit more palatable.
Okay.
Other questions from committee members? I'm going to need a motion to approve the recommendation of the of the one point five percent fee increase as well as the the cap increases. Let's have a chance to take a look at the resolution.
I need to file a petition. It should take me.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Move by trustee Buena Ventura. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Grande? Sam, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Barahona?
Aye.
Winaventura?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Soell?
I'm an aye.
Five ayes and zero nays. The motion carries.
Okay. We are now on item four point two. And has I think Adaseli, our Chief Financial Officer, is supposed to be presenting this item. She in the queue? Sam, do we see her? There she is. And this is the item dealing with spending authority pending the formal adoption of the the two thousand twenty-five budget. Good morning, Adaseli. You ready to roll?
Yes, ready to roll for the next few items. Good morning, Finance Committee members. The first item I'll be presenting today is the approval for our two thousand twenty-five spending authority as we have to wait for formal budget approval that happens in February, and as well as highlight some of the preliminary budget assumptions that we that we're going to be or adopting as as part of our budget process that's currently underway. So just as a reminder to to the committee, we normally adopt the budget or the board adopts the budget, and we have to submit it to the legislature by the twenty-eighth of February. So we always ask on an annual basis, usually at this meeting in November, for approval for expenditure for the first two months of the year, January and February. This year, we're we're seeking approval to spend about a hundred and ten million dollars. And of that, it's of that about eighty-one million dollars is actually grant expenditure. So most of it is grant expenditures that have to be made according to our contracts during Q one. And this number, the hundred and ten million, we obviously look at our historical spend spend, excuse me, during the first two months to come up with our amounts. We do adjust it for known expenditures that we know are going to incur, particularly grants. We know what what expenditures will be. And we also do a rough estimate for our personal costs, since we have an idea of what those might be for January and February. So that first piece, we are seeking authority to spend about a hundred and ten million dollars for January and February of two thousand twenty-five. And then the budget should be adopted by certainly by the end of February. And then the next piece is just highlighting some preliminary budget assumptions. The budget, the two thousand twenty-five budget is right now underway in in my office. And I highlighted here some of what the assumptions that we're currently building our budget off of. And I just want to, I'm not going to go through all of them, but I just want to highlight some that I think are worth noting. One one is we really have a very, we're estimating a very low growth rate for attorneys. It's only going to have a growth rate of point one seven percent, point seventeen percent, so not even one percent. That's what we are anticipating the growth of the population licensee population to be. So our revenue will be adjusted very, very minimally. Obviously, we always add a CPI index to a CPI adjustment to any expenditures that that merit such adjustment. This is the last year also of our COLA, or Cost of Living Adjustment. So everybody's going to get that two and a half percent. That's, you know, as part of our MOU agreements we have in place. We're obviously going to consider the impact of the golden handshake in our two thousand twenty-five budget, depending on the number of applicants and who they are. So that'll be factored into our two thousand twenty-five budget once once it gets finalized. And then I guess one other thing, the other post-employment benefit contribution that we normally do, we, you know, for for as a cost mitigation strategy, we didn't do it for two thousand twenty-four, but we will resume doing it for two thousand twenty-five and going forward. And I think that's all I have for this item. There's any questions?
Very good. Any questions for Adaseli? Members, this is a pretty pro forma technical item. And I have no questions.
We do have a resolution.
Sam, would you put the resolution up, please? Or Devin? Thank you. Okay. Need a motion to to address the spending authority issue for the first part of the year. Get a motion, please?
I don't know.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Buena Ventura, I think I'm going to I'm going to stick with you. I'm going to keep asking you every time, it seems like. Trustee Grande, you want to you want to?
I'll second.
All righty. Sam, would you mind calling the roll?
Barahona?
Issues? Aye.
Winaventura?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Soell?
I'm an aye.
Five ayes and zero nays. The motion carries.
Okay, I think we are on to item four point three on the agenda. Adaseli, I think this is you're presenting again, and if I remember correctly, this is an item that is just a discussion item.
Yes, that's correct. This item is just for discussion purposes only. There is no action to be taken by the committee. So I wanted to just discuss some proposed changes that I would like to make to the board policy manuals. Specifically, this addresses section five point two one, which has to do with the budget. There's there's two pieces of that section five point two one that I would like to propose changes to. One, one is increasing a threshold, the current established threshold for line item variances. So on an annual basis at the mid-year, we present a line item variance at at the cost center level and at the general GL account level. Anything that that fluctuates plus or minus a hundred thousand, we provide an explanation for. My proposal is to increase that threshold to a hundred thousand, from a hundred thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars. And I have in in the agenda, table one, I wanted to just kind of demonstrate the increase of from a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars is really very minimal. The budget has increased significantly year over year, at least for the past five years, as you can see in table one. So I think it's worth considering, you know, increasing the the threshold a little bit, just to two hundred thousand dollars. It's still less, we still cover. It's still less, we still cover a majority of the budget. That increase, you know, we are still covering more than ninety nine percent, really. If you look, if you look at the percentages of what two hundred thousand would be, you know, from our revenue and expenditures budgeted for the past four years. You know, it's, it's well below one percent for any, you know, in any given year. So that's the first proposal I would like to make. The second, there, the second piece, I want to propose establishing a threshold for, for two two pieces that we normally also do as part of the mid-year, and that's budget, budget transfers between funds and increases in budget expenditures. Currently, the policy doesn't have a thresholds for those two pieces, meaning the transfers between funds and increases in budget expenditures, it's silent, there is no threshold. So I would like to propose establishing a threshold of a hundred thousand dollars for these measures. And, you know, I, I will open it up to the finance committee if there's any questions or concerns. Attachment A is the red line of what those changes would look like and where in the board manual they, they would be reflected. And if the finance committee is, is in agreeance with these proposals, then in February, I'm going to bring it forward to the board executive committee for approval of these changes. So I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has any.
Questions from committee members on this? This is just a discussion item. Mister Buenaventura?
Yeah, I know it's not being changed, but I had a question on the reserves. And could you just tell me historically was the seventeen percent? How long has that been in place? And has that moved in any way over the last, I don't know, ten years?
I can tell you, as far as I've been here, it has not changed. I, I don't know if Leah, you might remember when was the last time it changed.
Yeah, I think that we adopted the reserve policy maybe two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. There was the very negative audit that came out about the bar prior to that saying that expenses were artificially inflated in order to sustain a very high reserve. And so we set that reserve, it equates to two and a half months of operating expenses. And we chose that level because it is what the judicial branch used at that time for the trial courts. I believe since then, very recently, there's been some increase in, on the court side in terms of their reserve threshold. And we have not moved to modify our reserve policy to align with that. But, but I'm not quite sure. I just, I do believe the courts, which have been our benchmark, have been allowed to maintain a bit higher of a reserve now.
Okay, thank you.
Mister trustee Buenaventura, concerns about the, the reserve threshold in terms of that, that percent too high, too low? Or just try to get a better sense maybe from you in terms of the line of questioning.
Yeah, no, I, I was wondering if we have gone down below that seventeen percent reserve? And is there a concern that we need to move that?
In terms of a policy, that's, that's what it said. But I, I can tell you that the general fund, for example, has fallen and is still below that seventeen percent. So we're not hitting that threshold for, certainly not for the general fund. And that equates to seventeen percent, it equates to about two and a half months worth of reserves of expenditures.
Okay. More from you, Mister Buenaventura? Okay. Trustee Grande?
I think this might be like, this might be a basic question, but could you just give me like a simple definition, like the difference between budget transfers and transfer between funds? Just so I'm clear what we're talking about.
The transfers, sure, transfers between funds, we have, I believe, thirteen funds. So if for, you know, some reason we needed to, you know, change or move funds from admissions to, to the general fund, that's, that's an example of a transfer between funds. What is, what is the other?
The budget transfers.
The budget, so the budget transfers, those are done at, at a more granular level. So we do budget transfers at the cost center level, for example, let's say, you know, the Office of Finance has, you know, cost center for professional services and a cost center for building operations. All, all within the same office, all within the same fund, but we'll just transfer it from, from, you know, professional services to building operations, though, that's the explanation for. So it's at a more granular level than at the fund level.
Perfect, clear, thank you.
Other questions from members of the committee? Or discussion? Yeah, Adaseli, just really quickly, just from a, from a purely operational standpoint, the way we, we as board members see this is that in many of sort of the attachments or when you're presenting on, you know, sort of the status of funds, et cetera. What this would mean is that there wouldn't be as many of those sort of transfers and things like that, that we would see reflected in some of those attachments from just a pure operational standpoint, right? It would, every, every time you move a, you know, a couple pennies here and there, you wouldn't have to come, you wouldn't have to come and sort of explain that to the board.
Correct, correct. And that's, that second piece of establishing threshold, that is kind of what I, I am aiming at. Instead of, you know, the board seeing a thousand dollar transfer, you know, you, you would only see anything above a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. At least from trying to, to sort of read the so the posture of members of the committee, I don't, and I know this is just as a discussion item. I don't see what it would appears to be, you know, folks expressing concerns or having some, some problems with, with this. It seems like it makes sense to me. And I, I know that from time to time, when I'm looking at some of the attachments and some of the, you know, the Excel spreadsheets and those sorts of things like that, there, there is an awful lot that, that's reflected in there. And it's sometimes it's hard to track and it seems like this will, will lessen some of, some of what it is that we're seeing on those, on the spreadsheet. Okay, we good?
Sure, so I'll, you know, if there's no objections, I'll plan to move this item for formal adoption in, in February to the board executive committee. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're ready to move to item four point four, which is proposed changes to schedule of charges. And also an accompanying sort of public comment amendments to some of the state law rules that may occur with that as well. Also, Adaseli?
Yeah, correct. So this next item is, is the request for approval and adoption of, of our schedule of charges and deadlines. This item is brought forth annually. It's one of our recurring annual items that typically happens again in November. I don't have a presentation, but I do want to go through a high level summary of the different pieces. Since there are some new changes to the schedule of charges and deadlines this year. So first I'll start, I'll start with, you know, we have in the agenda item, the fees. So, you know, bill, Assembly Bill thirty two seventy nine was assigned into law in September. And we received our much needed fee increase. So all of the active fees and inactive fees are now reflected in attachment A, which is this actual schedule of charges and deadlines that will ultimately be posted on our website. Once it's approved, that will reflect the active fees of five hundred and eighty dollars and the inactive fees of two hundred and five. So that's one item I definitely want to highlight. We also have in here the opt outs and opt ins, the licensees are allowed to meet. I'm not going to go through all of them, but these are pretty consistent with, with, with what we've had year over year. It's the same opt outs at the same dollar, opt outs or opt ins at the same dollar amount. One of the new changes that we are implementing this year to the schedule of charges and deadlines is the addition of CPI fee increases to admissions, certain admissions in general fund fees. Trustee Mark Tony recommended that we do outside of a, a full fee review, which happens every three years to make sure that we're increasing this, the program fees by a CPI to make sure that we catch up with, with increasing costs as, you know, in the years that we do not review it. So this is the first year that the schedule of charges and deadlines has applied, that we've applied a CPI to certain fees. And we use the most recent one available for, you know, when we drafted this agenda, and that was the August twenty twenty four CPI of two point seven percent. So going forward, we will consistently use that same, that same date to apply the CPI, just to be consistent. And we did round it to the nearest dollar. There are some fees, though, that we did exempt from applying CPI. Obviously, and I'll highlight some of those, those are the ones that we don't have authority to increase. And those are obviously any fees that the legislature or Supreme Court have authority over. We also have a handful of pass through fees that the vendors charges for, like a laptop key, I think, I believe is one of them. We don't anticipate that the vendors are going to increase the fees for twenty twenty five. And we did check with their respective offices to make sure that that was also their understanding. So any pass through fees, we did not apply any increase. There were also some fees that were updated and approved during two thousand, this year, twenty twenty four, such as mandatory fee arbitration, some of the accredited and unaccredited law schools, pro vici and out of state attorney. Those were increased and approved in twenty twenty four. So we didn't, obviously, we didn't apply a CPI, but next year they would be subject to a CPI, meaning for twenty twenty six. And then the bar exam fees is, you guys might remember, we are, we are revising the bar exam completely. So right now, we didn't recommend any increase to the bar exam fees as there will be significant format changes in twenty twenty five. So none of the bar exam fees for twenty twenty five have that CPI increase. Another piece that is, is that we're proposing to increases, a non-payment reinstatement fee. Currently, when a licensee doesn't comply with certain obligations by, by our set deadlines, they have to pay a non-compliance fee for each obligation. In twenty twenty three, the board did increase the reinstatement fees for certain obligations, such as CTAP, MCLB, just to name a few, at three hundred dollars. We didn't, we didn't ask for an increase for the non-payment reinstatement fee. It's currently set at one hundred dollars and to align to the other reinstatement fees, we would like to increase it to three hundred dollars or double the delugan amount, whichever is lesser. So that's an increase in that particular fee. We have a new fee that we would like to adopt for limited LPs, limited liability partnerships for the renewal fee. We have authority per state law rule three point one seven, one seven six B to, to impose that late fee on LPs. We didn't, this will be a new fee that we were not charging before, but because we do have authority, we would like to recommend adopting a one hundred dollar LP renewal fee, which the hundred dollars also aligns with other late fees we, we charge for other, other programs. I also want to highlight the client security fund interest rate reduction. So in September, the Client Security Fund Commission met and recommended that we reduce the client security fund interest, that we assess to any reimbursements that are owed to the client security fund. For many, many years, we've been charging ten percent and now we want to propose a reducing that ten percent to, to one percent at the recommendation also of the client security fund commission. And this will be important as we do our offering compromise next, next year in twenty twenty five. And finally, I want to address the request to circulate for public comment rule two point five. It's proposed amendments to, to that rule that has to do with voluntary resignations. Currently, we, we, we spend a lot of, not a lot, but there's definitely staff time spent on voluntary resignations, and we do not charge a fee for that. So we want to post for public comment certain amendments to rule two point four five. And that's attachment D has the red line. Attachment C is the conversion. Attachment D is the red line of, of the proposed amendments to the rule. And also recommend that we adopt a voluntary resignation fee of eighty five dollars. And I just want to highlight that obviously the fee would only be effective if, if amendments to, to that paragraph, paragraph B of rule two point four five are adopted by the board. And just to highlight really quickly, an attachment D to propose amendments to the rule are to remove the requirement that the Board of Trustees approves the voluntary resignation form, which is the current process. And the change would be, the proposed change would be that, you know, whoever wants to submit for a voluntary resignation, they do so via a form that we will post on our website and submit it. And then obviously pay the associated resignation fee. So those are the proposed amendments to the rule. And you see it in attachment D. And that's a high level of everything that this agenda item covers. If there's any questions?
Questions from committee members? Adaseli, I, I do have a, a quick question. You know, there are some, some opportunities for folks to make donations to, to certain sort of special, like the Justice Gap Fund and et cetera. Is there, I know that those are kind of opt in provisions. Is there at some point in time, if, if those are running very, very low or would, would you and Lee and, and, and staff come back to us with maybe recommendations that those are things that are no longer a part of? Sort of a set of opt in opportunities? Or how do, how are we going to, going to handle? I, I know one of the things I looked at, I, I looked at was sort of a five dollar donation for legislative activities. And I know that statutorily, there have been some changes as to how it is that we can, we can do our advocacy work. And so just, just wondering how, how we might address that going forward.
I think we're, we, the board is limited in its ability to exercise a lot of discretion there. Because as you mentioned, like with that particular one, it's statutorily limited, right? It used to be an opt out. And then the legislature made that a donation. And when that happened, the revenue plummeted. And we don't have the ability to convert it back to an opt out. That would require statutory change. A number of the donations that are slated for legal services are also prescribed, I think all of them prescribed by statute. So we couldn't just change them. And there has been a concern in the past about, say, adding a new category for donations. A concern that it would negatively impact the legal services donations in particular. So there's a lot of legislative interest in that whole opt out, opt in donation section. So we haven't, you know, been very aggressive, I would say, in identifying potential changes there. This last legislative cycle, you may recall, we were successful in getting a portion of one of the legal services related fees slated for legal services fellowships. That's something that we did in partnership with the legal aid community. But that tends to be the only way that we get changes in that section is through partnerships. So if you have something specific in mind that you'd like to see us do, we can certainly take a look at it and see if maybe it is appropriate for the legislative agenda.
Okay. Thank you for, for, and I, I want to think about this a little bit more. Okay, but, but thank you for that response. Are there anything else on this particular item, questions, comments from, from committee members? All right. Devin, would you mind putting up the resolution? Okay. I think this is reflective of, of the presentation in terms of the recommendations for the, the fees as well as the, the public comment item. We okay? We get a motion? If you mind, Mister Buenaventura, if I go to you, and then also trustee Grande again?
Make the motion.
Thank you.
All second.
Thank you, too. Sam, you might call in the roll, please?
Barahona.
Aye.
Buenaventura.
Aye.
Grande.
Aye.
Trejo.
Aye.
Solwell.
Aye.
Five ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Very good. Adaseli, I think we have just, just two more items on the, the agenda. These are review of sort of quarterly statements. And so hopefully we can buzz through these pretty quickly.
Yes, correct. I, I do have a PowerPoint presentation, though, for the quarter three financial statements. So I'm going to share my screen and then if the members can please let me know once you see it. And the correct format. Is it showing now in your screens in the correct format?
It is, Adal Selly, but I think we have multiple screens as opposed to just one PowerPoint.
It's not in presentation view.
There you go. I think you're getting there.
It's still not in the right view.
Okay. I will try something. Apologies. I thought. Is it, do you see it?
Yes. You're good.
Okay, good. So I'll, I'll try to go through this a little bit quicker. But this is the presentation for the financial statement results for quarter three. I'll first go into our revenue results and then I'll move on to the expenses. So I think after the budget amendments that we did during the mid-year, a lot of, a lot of the funds are now, the variances between budget to actuals are a lot lower and you'll see that even more so in the expenses. Slide, which is coming up next. But first, I'll just highlight revenue or bar-wide revenue. It's almost three hundred and fifty-six million, which is about a little bit over five million above budget. And that variance you see is, is made up of the funds listed below. So only highlights certain of the, you know, the key fluctuations in some of these, or variances, excuse me, of these funds. So first of all, starting off with the general fund. The general fund is higher, higher than budget on the revenue side by just a little bit over three million dollars. Really, the main, the main cause of this is the late C.TAP compliance fees. We've received a decent amount of C.TAP late compliance fees that have helped, that have helped increase our, our general fund budget. I do want to keep highlighting, as I have in the prior two quarters, we are still falling short of our mandatory fee revenue. The mandatory fee revenue is the most significant revenue source in the general fund and we are projecting to fall short by about probably close to six hundred thousand dollars for the year. So thankfully, we have a decent amount of C.TAP fees that are making up for that shortfall. The next, the next fund I want to highlight is the grants fund. It is below budget revenue, below revenue budgeted by just about a million dollars. And this is really just from, so the grants is, most of the, all of the grants are really passed through except for a small portion, which is just the administrative reimbursements. The grants fund encompasses many of our smaller grants, one of them being the Care Corps Grant. So there wasn't, there was, I should say, reduced Care Corps funding. So obviously, if there's less funding, there's less revenue that, that we receive and that gets passed through. So that was the main reason for the decrease in revenue in the grants fund. And then there was a little bit of stuff turnover. So that resulted in less billable time that we can get from administrative reimbursements. The admissions fund, as you can see, is above budget, which is a good thing. They're above budget by about a million and a half. And this is really just due to the February and July exams that we just had more applicants than we anticipated. We also did receive more applicants for some of the other fees that we charged at admissions, such as moral character determination, law student and attorney registration fees were also exceeded expectations. So that, that's what drove the revenue to increase for admissions than what we had budgeted. And finally, on the revenue side, other funds, it is higher than budget by about one point seven million dollars. And this is really mostly due to class action settlements, suit settlements that get donated to the Justice Gap Fund. So that, that's the revenue. Now I'll be moving on to the expenses. Here is where you can see a lot of our funds outside of general fund and admissions is really falling more or less in line with our budget. So bar-wide, our operating expenses are two hundred and fifty-eight million dollars, which is below budget by just a little bit over eight million dollars. And as I mentioned, most of that is due to the general fund and admissions being below budget on our expenditures. So starting off with the general fund, it is below budget and it's, it's a combination of a few things. We have savings in professional services personnel costs, I.T. equipment and building operations. And the professional services, the savings are really from, mostly from the I.T. side. We have delayed projects or past projects that are in review and professional services. So they're saving theirs. And we also had less referrals from the twenty-two oh one program. So that created savings in professional services. For building operations, we had savings in several areas, one being our, our insurance for the San Francisco building. We also, we also revised or renewed, or revised our Los Angeles office parking lease contract that we have. We have now less parking spaces. So there were savings in, in that contract for building operations. We expect in building operations to have close to five hundred thousand dollars in actual savings. Sometimes the, the variances are, the savings are time, time, a matter of timing, but these are actual savings we expect to realize in building operations in the general fund. Moving on to the grants fund, the grants fund is below budget also by about five million dollars. And this is really mostly due to staff vacancies that we were able to realize savings. And also another grant that's under the grants fund is called the Access Less Grant. This was ultimately not funded. So if it's not funded, that means there's no expenditures going out. And that's the main reason for the grants fund being under budget, but just, just about three hundred thousand dollars. The admissions fund also is below budget by one point four million. And this is mainly due to the services and also exam-related expenses. For admissions, the lower, the savings in professional services were really driven by process improvements in testing accommodations. And we also had some outside printing for exam development that we were able to save on. And then on, on the exam-related side, we really did have a decent number of savings from using our state bar facilities for some of the bar exam. And as well as using staff, staff volunteers, proctors and some savings in greater, so that, that has helped admission incur less costs. The client security fund is also lower by almost a million dollars from budget. And that's really mainly due to less applications that are eligible for payment. That's, that's been, you know, the main reason for the client security fund quarter over quarter. And finally, the other funds, it is also below budget by just about three hundred thousand dollars. And it's just mainly savings from the L.A.P. or Lawyer's Assistant Program Counseling Services and Elimination of Bias Fund Services. And that is, that is the presentation for our quarter three results. Happy to answer any question.
Questions? Committee members? I have none. Devin, the resolution here? Just need to approve the quarterly financial statement?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I was, I was putting my hand up because I wanted to get in.
Okay, very good, very good. Trustee. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm glad you, you're breaking the track record here, huh? Trusty Barahona moves the, moves the item. Can I get a second? Mr. Trejo, you want to jump in?
Sure, aye.
Very good. All right. Moved by Trusty Barahona, second by Trusty Trejo. Sam, when you call the roll, please?
Yes, Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Solol?
I'm an aye, thank you.
Five ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Okay, last item on the agenda is the quarter three investment report.
Yes, the last item. Thank you, Arnie. I don't have a presentation. I'll just, you know, briefly summarize our quarter three investment report results. You know, all of our investments, we follow the California investment policy. And if you look at the details, all of our investments really are in very, very low-risk securities. It's all government, government securities. The market value has remained pretty, pretty consistent. It's just us purchasing more investments. As, as they mature, I work with Wells Fargo, our investment advisor at Wells Fargo, to purchase new investments. One of the, one of the positive things, this, at least this year up until Q three, is we've had exceeding investment income as a result of really good interest rates. That's starting to come down. The first investments that we, that I repurchase, or that we purchase, I should say, starting in Q three, as you can see, have now dropped below five percent. So now we can expect to see lower investment earnings than we have this past year. As the rates are now falling into, into the low, low to mid-four percent. So that, that will probably be a continuing trend into twenty twenty-five. But nonetheless, we're still doing good in terms of our investment income. And, and our, our investments are mostly government securities and, and commercial paper. It's pretty, pretty secure and, and low risk. But that's, that's all I have for the investment report. If anybody has any questions?
Questions on the investment report? Okay, Devin, go to the, the reso? Okay, with that, Trusty Barahona, can I go back to you, please?
Sure can. I, I move, I move on this one.
Mr. Trejo, same?
And I'll second.
You got it. Thank you. Sam, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Solol?
I'm an aye.
Five ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, members of the, of the finance committee. And I, I think that is everything that's on our agenda for today. Is that correct? Sam and Adal Selly?
Yes.
Members, if you don't mind, just for, for a second, if you could indulge me in terms of just maybe a, a, a point of privileges, a point as the chair. I have to admit that the, the, the public commenters earlier suggestions of, of impropriety and bribes and those sorts of things like that kind of took me aback and frankly, sort of offended me. And I just want to just sort of say for the record that I know that we all took oaths of office to the, to the Constitution and to uphold the laws of the state of California. And that I know that we all also know and are fully aware that we have codes of conduct that we operate under as, as members of the, of the state bar as well as conflict of interest code and guidelines that we operate under as, as members of, of the state bar. And I know that unequivocally that, that we all, each and every one of us, take those, those oaths as well as those codes, those codes of operation very, very seriously. And so I just sort of wanted to just sort of state that for the record that I, I sort of resent the, the implications of, of some of the public and the references of some of the public commentators. I just wanted to get that on the record. So I appreciate you allowing me to, to that point of privilege. All right, with that, we good to adjourn? I think so. Leah, moving into the regular board meeting, should we just, just sort of wait till eleven, eleven fifteen-ish or I'm not sure how I should let board members know when, when they need to return here?
Do you want to advise on that, Luisa?
Leah, Luisa, you're on, you're on mute.
Thank you. I'm bringing in all of the board members right now. And as soon as we have everyone at the direction of the chair, we can get started.
Okay. Could we take like a five-minute break, please?
Yes, five minutes enough. They might need more time. All right, five minutes. So we'll see everybody at eleven. Let's just make it eleven-ten.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Arnie. That's for the first time. All right, Luis, we started recording. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right. And I understand that Trusty Trejo has jury duty, which provides a appropriate reminder for everyone here that exercising jury duty or responding to jury duty summons is absolutely a way to perform your civic duty. So encourage everyone hearing this to respond to the summons and be a part of our great judicial system. All right, Trustee Stevens. Looks like juror number one. Let's do this. Okay, I want to call the meeting of the Board of Trustees. This is November fourteenth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Barahona?
Present.
Buena Ventura?
Present.
Cisneros?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Grande?
Present.
User? Solol?
Present.
Thank you. Stallings?
Present.
Stevens?
Present.
And Tony, Tony, I'm sorry. Thank you. And Trejo, not present. You have a quorum, Chair.
All right. Thank you so much. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. Next on the agenda is a call for public comment. And before we begin public comment, I'd like to remind everyone that under the Bagley-Kean Open Meeting Act, public comments must pertain to items that are on the agenda or be related to matters that are within the jurisdiction of this agency. Specifically, the board is the state bar's governing body and is responsible for exercising oversight of the state bar. The board sitting as the Regulation and Discipline Committee oversees the work of the attorney discipline system. We have a full agenda today and as the Chair of the Board, I do reserve the right to limit each speaker's time to two minutes or to close a public comment period after a specific period of time, which includes a break or after the first one hundred speakers, whichever occurs first. Secretary, do we have? If I could have anybody who wishes to make public comment, if they could raise their hands? And just a brief outline of the process. If you're participating via Zoom, you should have a function for virtually raising your hand. It's the hand icon should appear at the bottom center of your screen. Please press a button now and which would give your indication that you wish to make public comment. If you're participating via phone, you can press star nine and that will alert staff members. If you're participating via remote location, please alert the staff member present in the room that you'd like to make public comment. Due to time restrictions, we cannot allow more than three minutes per speaker. Please note that staff will have an on-screen countdown timer visible to all attendees during the duration of your public comment. The timer's three-minute countdown will begin as soon as you start your comment. The on-screen timer will flash throughout the final ten seconds. We have a heavy agenda. And again, depending upon how many public commenters, I will reserve the right to reduce the time to two minutes per the state bar's public comment policy. All right. Well, we said we don't have any advance signup. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Can we call in the first individual to raise their hand?
Yes, first speaker is Ray Hayden. Your microphone has been enabled.
Thank you very much. My report, I don't know if you have anything agendized for it. I couldn't find anything specifically, but on the experimental exam that was just done on the eighth and ninth, I was a member and I participated on the eighth. I have good news. The first thing is I had problems with my laptop. Every time I pick it up, the cord wiggled a little bit and I lost the Wi-Fi connection. But the system itself tries to get the system back online. It eventually did. When it did, it opened up a couple other sessions and the proctors, since they had the control of the computer at the time, could go in and fix that for me, which is something Examsoft never could have done or would have done, especially with the numbers. But anyway, so, but they were able to get me back in and back online and I was able to complete the forty-nine questions in the ninety minutes. And I would love to see a survey go out to everybody who took that because I've been doing unofficial surveys and asking how things went with everybody. And what I've been getting back is overwhelming in person and remote overwhelming that everybody was able to get in, get the job done and have a smooth experience with the whole thing. And I just found that to be just utterly fantastic because I've been pushing for remote for years. And the more recently worldwide remote, and I think some people outside the country, I don't know for sure, but I And the more recently worldwide remote, and I think some people outside the country, I don't know for sure, but I think some people outside the country had been able to participate. So I think it's an excellent thing. And I'm still going to push for removal of the written section for the exact same reasons they got rid of it on the first year exam. Because I, it's too much time to get through the numbers. So I'll submit something for the next meeting in writing in advance. But, but, but for this exact same logic reasoning and design for getting rid of it, because after the first year exam did drop that in June of twenty twenty-four, I saw that not only did these numbers jump a little bit, not nearly enough, but they jumped. And also repeaters for the first time I ever saw out past the first time takers. So basically just proving my point about that written exam. And the only other issue I have, not really an issue, just a comment, is that the performance test during the pandemic just took longer. I mean, we have, we couldn't write on any paper. We didn't have any paper. We couldn't mark up documents and stuff. I'm doing my bar exam prep for twenty twenty-five right now. And they keep saying make notes, make scratches, do this. And another thing I'm saying, not really possible. So I keep sending them notes on that, but just either more time or something on the performance test. It just takes longer to go through and find stuff and we can't have paper or anything. So that's, that's an issue. But anyways, I think that CalBar is really making some excellent strides moving forward. And if we pack that place with new license fee paying attorneys, I think that'll wrap up some of that deficit I heard in that meeting before. All right. Thanks very much. Have a great meeting and thank you for your time.
All right, Mr. Hayden, thank you so much for that feedback. And certainly I think you highlight some of the goals that we're working towards as a board and staff has certainly been working exceptionally hard to turn this vision into a reality. So thank you for that feedback and thank you to all who participated in that program. All right, Ms. Arpetian, next caller, please.
Next, we have Benjamin Kown. Your microphone has been enabled.
Thank you. I wanted to start with the experiment that the previous commenter commented on for the benefit of those trustees or staff who were not at the hearings earlier in the week. I have been hearing from a lot of applicants with disabilities that have unfortunately not had a, a good experience with the handling of the experiment. I had thought when I last commented to you that there would be a good trial period for the timelines I've been advocating for, given the time between the setting of the experiment and the, and the deadline register and the time roughly mirrored the two weeks. But it appears that instead staff has chosen not to process or make decisions on the merits of accommodation requests for the bar exam experiment that were not already in place from well before the bar exam experiment was scheduled or confirmed or open with the standard conditions confirmed or in the grading incentive confirmed. And that mirrored a discussion at the October CBE meeting where the certain CBE members, particularly Robert Brody, were talking like the experiment was something solely for the state bar's benefit, that it could pick and choose among which applicants it wanted to offer it to in pretty much indiscriminately, including like totally unconstitutional criteria, like in-state residence is being the only eligibility thing despite having a grading incentive that will impact access to performance in the attorney licensure system on future bar exams, which people have now not had equal access to, even though he didn't get his way on the in-state restriction. The staff have not processed for, on the merits disability accommodation requests that were submitted prior to the registration deadline for the bar exam experiment in time for the bar exam experiment. And now there is an inherent structural disadvantage for those applicants on future bar exams because they didn't get an opportunity to, especially with performance being the criteria for the grading incentive to qualify for that. That really needs to be remedied by a makeup exam or by giving them that extra credit that they otherwise would have had an opportunity to qualify for. I know you can't give it to them, but asking the California Supreme Court to let you give it to them is, I think, on you at this point. I also commented at the hearings that there's been a lot of year after year pushback against pretty much the unanimous consensus of all other stakeholders besides your staff. And that really needs to be reconsidered. Thank you.
Always thank you for your attention given to state bar issues and for your public comment. All right, next commenter.
Next, we have Erin Schroder. Your microphone has been enabled.
Oh, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I appreciate the ability to make a public comment. And I'll confess, this is the first time I have done so. So I welcome the opportunity. I would like to speak to the recent rule changes that pertain to CTAPP compliance. It, it is a new rule, as everyone is well aware of. And I myself have been an attorney since two thousand and seven. And for myself, what, what occurred is I did not receive an email from the state bar indicating the timeframe and the requirements for the CTAPP non-compliance. And I've since remedied the issue with my email, but I do understand from attending the last meeting that the general fund is now higher due to a voluminous amount, it sounds like, of late CTAPP compliance fees. And so it seems like many attorneys, perhaps throughout the state, well-meaning attorneys have, you know, incurred a fee. And it is my position, and I've stated this in writing to the bar, that this rule was new. I did do the, the required the required paperwork on the bar's website in terms of the trust fund compliance. I, I simply did not realize that there was a fee that needed to be paid in addition to that. And I, I think it was a, a bit confusing to many involved, including myself. And so I am with a situation now where I have an administrative inactive reference on my California State Bar profile, which is just quite honestly devastating. And you know, and, and I think it's for four hundred dollars or so fee, which I would have happily paid had I realized that I owed it. And so this has just been really professionally very difficult. And and I have been told by the bar in writing that the state bar is exploring rule changes that might allow in the future to expunge or screen administrative inactive enrollments. And I would just really encourage the adoption of such a rule. And I, I, I certainly, you know, I think it's punitive as it stands right now. And I think changes could be made going forward. So it's clear to attorneys that a fee is, is required. I see I have ten seconds left. And so I want to thank everyone for their time. This is certainly an important issue to me and I, I think many people across the state.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Schroder, for your comments and we will continue to look at that. All right, next commenter, please.
We have someone by the name of LRIS. Your microphone has been enabled.
Oh, hi, everyone. Good morning. My name is Antonio Hernandez. I'm the director for the LRIS program for San Francisco Marin at the Bar Association of San Francisco. And wanted to just address item four point seventeen, which is on the agenda for later. The increase in recertification fees for LRS programs across the state, which will be proposed to go from one percent to one point five percent. Now, I've been with the LRS programs for about twenty years and totally sympathize and understand with the fact that, you know, the recertification of our programs hasn't been updated in quite some time, nearly thirty years. So it, it is due and it's necessary to, you know, for the office compliance to have sufficient funding to operate that, that, that office. One thing I, I do want to draw attention to and consideration, and it's just you know, and super appreciative that the state bar is engaging all LRISs and that we're part of, you know, the sort of task force right now, if you will say, you know, to try to address the, this issue of, you know, how LRISs can continue to operate and stand on their own feet. And also so that, you know, the state bar can continue to certify these, these very important public service programs. But just drawing attention to the fact that many LRIS programs across the state have been struggling financially. And so I, I get it again, that we do have to stand on our own feet. Meanwhile, though, at the same time, part of the reason why we are struggling is because you have programs, well, not programs, you have Google, you know, search engines that people are, you know, essentially turning to and have really, I think, compromised the how much the public is utilizing the, the LRIS programs nowadays. You know, there's essentially more self-service happening. And I'd like to think that in a practical way, really, you know, search engines like this are, in some way, they're, well, we know that they are profiting from, you know, the, the marketing that, the, the direct marketing that attorneys are able to engage in by, you know, buying Google ads and things like that. So, you know, I would hope that consideration would be given later in the future to how things such as Google ads could be taxed in some, some manner. So that if Google is profiting off of attorneys paying for advertisements, which are circumventing the LRIS programs and the public service that we're providing, that some way that could go towards, you know, bridging that gap or, or, you know, filling in that deficit that, that the state bar is experiencing for the operation of programs such as ours. Thank you.
I think so. See, trustee Tony has his hand raised.
I'm sorry, for clarification, could someone say what an LRIS means, please?
Sure. It's a lawyer referral information service, I believe is what the acronym stands for. And so if you're looking for a lawyer, you could contact, say, the Alvin County Bar Association runs one and they will refer you to lawyers that are certified by that program.
Thank you very much. I do know that what lawyer referral services, I didn't recognize the acronym. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, trustee Tony. Any other commenters?
No, we do not have any additional members who'd like to address the board.
All right. Thank you. We'll now close the public comment period. We'll go to item one, which is the chair's report. It's my pleasure, under item one point one point one, to introduce a new staff member who will be helping with the Board of Trustees duties. That individual is here on the Zoom, Devin McFarland, welcome. And I'd invite Secretary Arpetian to tell us a little bit about Devin.
All right. Thank you. I think most of you have already met Devin, but for those who have not, just wanted to take a quick moment to introduce her. Devin is a program analyst in the Office of Admissions. She began her career with the state bar in November twenty seventeen in State Bar Court and then transitioned to the Office of Admissions in February of twenty twenty. She's a proud native, a Bay Area native, and holds a VA in sociology from UC Berkeley and brings a ton of experience to the state bar. And in her current role, Devin serves as the committee coordinator to the committee of bar examiners and provides support to the director of admissions. Devin is also going to be assisting with board support. So again, if you haven't already, you can expect to hear more from her moving forward. Thank you and welcome, Devin.
All right, welcome. If you want to say a few words, feel free. If not, feel free to help us move on. It's up to you.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to assist Luisa with board support and I look forward to working with everyone.
All right. Look forward to working with you as well and just grateful for all the work that you and Luisa do to make our lives a little bit easier. So thank you for that. Moving on to one point two, this is a discussion and approval of reduction in frequency of board trustee meetings. Creation of a contracts committee with delegated authority to approve certain contracts. And then discussion of agenda management and meeting materials. And this is really the culmination of a discussion that both staff and orders have been having over the past probably half year as we look at ways to continue to improve our operational efficiency. And if you recall way back at the very beginning of, of the start of my first term as chair, one of the things I talked about was this trajectory of excellence. And I really think that we're in that next phase of really, you come out of the woods as far as dealing with some of the significant issues that the board has had to address. Bifurcation of the bar, various issues surrounding governance, and then various things that are in the news and require a lot of our time. And, you know, definitely don't want to jinx anything, but I really do believe that we have turned a corner as an organization. I'd like to think that the legislature has seen that and entrusting us with additional funds in order to meet our very real needs. We need to be a wise steward of those needs. And I think one of the things that absolutely needs to be discussed is the frequency of meetings. If you've noticed, we've had shorter agendas over the past year. And it really should come as no surprise that there's a tremendous amount of board time, or excuse me, staff time that goes into the planning of these meetings, attending, providing reports and just the staffing of these meetings. And so if there's a way that we as a board can help contribute to that operational efficiency, I think it really is on us to look at, at everything. And so that's what we've done. We've looked at reduction of Board of Trustees meetings. We've gotten gone inside and input from various trustees on what they would like to see more of in order to maximize our time as a board together and also staff time in assisting us in making these very important decisions. So with that backdrop, I think everybody has, hopefully everybody's seen the agenda item. Leah, did we have any staff report on this?
You mean, do we want to make any oral comment? I, I, I don't think so. I think it's reflected in the item. Just certainly the move to the four meetings is very, I think, self-explanatory. There's some other content in the item about sort of meeting operations, interested to see if board members have any feedback on that. And I know I've had a discussion with one trustee about the consent calendar and, and rules items. And so this might be a good time to broach that issue as well, but hoping to hear and feedback from the board.
All right. So I want to open this up then to the board for questions or comments. All right. Yes, trustee Tony.
I think it makes a lot of sense to go from every other month to quarterly. Most of the boards I serve on have quarterly meetings. And that matches up, that aligns with, for instance, finances. Most financial reports, including our own, are reported on a quarterly basis. A lot of the program reports, the Office of Chief Trial Counsel, the discipline reports, those are all done quarterly. And I actually think it means that we as a board get more timely information instead of sometimes having to wait because of the way that six meetings a year falls to get pertinent information. So in addition to the cost savings, I think there are operational efficiencies and improvements. So I really support this.
All right. Thank you for that. And, you know, certainly what I don't want to be messaged to any of our stakeholders is that the board is relinquishing any sort of oversight or loosening its, its hold over, you know, all of the various functions of, of the state bar. We've been working on the trustee liaisons assignments for the past couple of years. I think that's been a really effective way to efficiently use trustees' times. For the past couple of years, I think that's been a really effective way to efficiently use trustees' times. Um, to have that really point-to-point contact with uh, the various uh, portions of the bar, you know. First, for instance, the two two oh one program, those C T C uh, liaisons, I mean, you guys do a lot of work. And uh, really appreciate that. So I think we can kind of bring that same efficiency into other areas. Uh, certainly, this is going to be a work in progress and certainly open to uh, any. Request for for change or for improvements as we see how this, you know, if it's adopted, see how this new uh, system works. I I might think just from a personal standpoint, um, having two in-person meetings and two. Um, Zoom meetings, I know it's, we were trying to be consistent with what we've asked our various entities to do as far as reducing in person. I do like having um, our board together physically as much as possible in one place. Think it really helps with the quality of our decisions and the quality of of uh, the work that we put out, not to diminish. Uh, what we do uh, on Zoom, but I just I think having that uh, in-person time is important. So certainly I'm going to be. Looking for um, suggestions on whether we do. Two in person or perhaps look at doing more of those meetings in person. Yes, trustee Buenaventura.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to express my support for this as well, but also to reiterate and uh. Fall fall on the staff's recommendation that they consider the San Francisco meetings. Uh, as well, because I I I like the idea of us meeting in person and I think if. We shared some of the meetings to be in San Francisco, that could be uh, great. So I support that. Thank you.
And we did get the budget um, for that of the quote, and I think we can certainly do that um, within our twenty twenty five budget. And I've talked to the new C I O about that. So probably not for February, but hopefully for the second meeting in um, twenty twenty five. We can have that in San Francisco.
Alright, thank you. Yes, trustee Tony.
Um, thank you. I'd like to express a strong preference for in-person meetings. Um, now that we're going down to four. Also, uh, trustee uh, Buenaventura's uh. Suggestion that we try to alternate between L A and San Francisco. And um, the other thing, just as a recommendation, is that. Um, committee chairs consider having committee meetings. Uh, two to three weeks prior to the board meetings. It gives a lot more time for the board meetings. Um, which may have longer agendas, for instance, because we're having with less frequency. And it also permits things that are um, decisions that are made at the committees to be reflected. On the trustee agenda. Um, and avoid the situation of, well, if it doesn't pass there, then what do we do? We'll kind of have more certainty going into the trustee meeting. So those are just suggestions. Um, I know I do that with the audit committee. Um, but you know, so I'm I'm kind of following my own advice. But um, I'm just throwing that out as consideration. Thank you.
Absolutely. I think our our committees will continue continue to be nimble and to respond to uh, things that come up. Uh, one of the things that I did in the last um, appointment. Uh, to the committees is to reduce the total number of uh, individuals sitting on committees. So hopefully. Uh, trustees aren't like, man, you know, I I only have, you know, one assignment uh, on a committee and feel left out, but we really. Did need to bring that back down to five, so we could have flexibility in scheduling these meetings, um, among other other issues. Um, and I have received information that the um, from a budget standpoint, we are planning on having all four meetings in person. Um, and that it's largely aligned with um, the schedule that we have, we've had for the past couple of years. We've had a certain number in person and also. Uh, remote, so should not be an issue. Alright, any other questions, comments, concerns? Yes, trustee Barahona.
Yeah, I I I support um, all the suggestions that that have been offered. I do think that this. Um, it does allow uh, trustees to have uh, additional time back. Um, to support the efforts of the state bar, including continuing to build really strong relationships. Uh, with the legislative staff. And so I do think that there is a uh. I I think I just want to make sure that that's acknowledged, that it. That the business can be done in these four meetings a year in person and with the suggestions that that have been made, but we also need to support. Staff in any way possible as they they continue to deepen those relationships um, with the legislature. They've done an incredible job. And I think we want to continue to be um, upfront and center. Uh, with um, a lot of the important committees that we need to be in front of. So I just wanted to make sure to say that.
Yes, thank you for that. Alright, any other comments? Oh, yes.
Yeah, I'll just say, I thought you were maybe gonna mention this trustee Tony, but I wanted to be really um. Uh, clear with the board about what we've been doing with respect to agenda management and rules. And as we go through today, just have you kind of think about that and. Then we can perhaps come back to this conversation in a different meeting. But what we've been doing is, you know, rules go out for public comment and then they return from public comment for adoption. We have typically put uh, rules that are going out for public comment on the discussion agenda. Giving you an opportunity to hear the staff presentation, the rationale for the rule, et cetera. When it returns from public comment, typically it's going on consent unless there was a significant amount of public comment. There is not a significant amount of public comment, but there's something politically sensitive about the public comment that was received. Um, or some other unusual circumstance. So because for the vast majority of our proposals, not much comment is received. You see much of those coming back from public comment on consent, many of those items. Um, again, there are exceptions and today's agenda reflects that. That is an agenda management uh, tool. Um, because you can imagine if they go on discussion when they both go out for public comment and they come back. You are kind of doubling the the board time associated with the rules items. So that's what we have been doing. I know trustee Tony's gonna pull a few rules items off consent. Um, and again, I just offer that up to you as an explanation of what we have been doing. Think about it as we proceed today. It's a great meeting to kind of think through that and then perhaps we could revisit it at at another time.
Sounds like a plan. Alright, unless there's any further comments or uh, discussion, can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Sorry, should I have the resolution from the board first? Trustee Stevens, does that change your motion at all?
Yeah, no, this is the same one that's in our packet, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, can I have a second?
A second.
Alright, first by trustee Stevens, second by trustee Grande. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Barahona.
Aye.
Buenaventura.
Aye.
Cisneros.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Grande.
Aye.
Q sir.
Aye.
Soell. Oh, trustee Soell is not present. Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo, not present, and Stallings.
Aye.
That is nine ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
Alright. Uh, next year is going to be a fun uh, streamlined version of the Board of Trustees, so looking forward to seeing you guys. Uh, in person and continuing this great work. So thank you for all your input um, that uh, that you gave in getting this passed. Uh, that concludes my comments. Going to hand it over to our executive director, Leah Wilson.
Hey, just very briefly, what I posted to the E D's report. Is an overview of all of the recommendations that came out of the ad hoc commission on the discipline system. And a status update. And I did that because um, several of you have asked for something like that. Uh, we have two ad hoc related items, um, at least two on the discussion agenda today. And I, this is an effort that's been going on for a number of years. There are multiple items that have been going back and forth with the board. For multiple reads. So really just intended to provide you with a bit of a roadmap. And I will post this to the E D uh, report anytime there is an ad hoc item. So you can see where we are uh, on the agenda. As you can see, the end is near here, but uh, but we're not quite to the finish line. So I just wanted to highlight that for you and of course, uh, let me know if you have any questions on that. Um. Secondly, just in response to to the public comment, we heard about C T A P uh, compliance fees. Um, the statement some of you heard in finance about the significant amount of those, uh, the finance committee about the amount of those fees we've received. I want to um, really assure the board that when we hear concerns of that attorneys have about suspensions, things on their profile. Each of those are um, investigated individually. When I say investigated, uh, looked into to determine. Was there any error or omission on the part of our staff in terms of noticing attorneys? How many times do we notice them? To what email address? Look, to make sure that we've done what we are required to do uh, before we trigger any kind of suspension or website notice. So I just want you to have confidence that we are doing that. We respond. Uh, I probably get a couple of these. Uh, concerns elevated up to me uh, a couple of times a week. And I send them over to Steve Moad, who you'll hear from today, and he looks into each one individually. So while the board will have an opportunity to explore. Sort of an en masse, uh, en masse solution to this in the expungement and website removal policy. Um, on your agenda later today, if you so choose. Do know that in the meantime, we are looking into these on a one-on-one basis and making any adjustments as needed. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Leah, for your responsiveness to uh, I think what a lot of us are hearing uh, in this, in this space. And certainly, uh, the um, ad hoc commission. Uh, recommendations, uh, touches on almost every aspect of. Uh, our our organization and definitely want to avoid any sort of. Uh, organizational fatigue and getting these things from point A to point Z, and it truly has been. Every step uh, from point A to point Z. And so just want to applaud staff. On uh, sticking with it, on having a goal, executing um, a vision and um, just really. Now bring us into a um. A zone where we're going to be uh, figuring out how to monitor these different changes. And then uh, evaluate or reevaluate uh, as we get more data. So uh, this really came out of a conversation regarding the um. Uh, state bar court metrics and just different things that we can do to uh, continue to monitor these reforms. So Leah, thank you to you and your your crew for uh, for this monumental effort. Really do appreciate it. Okay, that is, uh, that concludes item two. We're going to go to item three, which are open, which are the open session minutes. This is approval of the July, excuse me, September. Uh. Nineteen through twenty, twenty twenty four Board of Trustees Open Session Minutes. And are there any corrections or modifications to these open session minutes? And if not, may I have a first and a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Alright, thank you. First by trustee Good, second by trustee Barahona. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Barahona.
Aye.
Buenaventura.
Aye.
Cisneros.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Grande.
Aye.
Q sir.
Aye.
Soell, not present. Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Stallings.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, minutes are adopted.
Thank you. Before we get into the consent calendar, just a housekeeping item as far as today's schedule. Uh, we've been going uh, in the full Board of Trustees meeting since about eleven ten this morning. I anticipate breaking for lunch at twelve thirty. And giving everybody thirty minutes to get lunch, understanding that people might need to eat at their desk. Or wherever you're appearing from. Does that work with everybody? Anybody want more time? Okay. Alright, seeing no hands, so we'll plan on breaking at uh, twelve thirty and resuming at approximately one o'clock for this afternoon. Right, going to our consent calendar. Um, this is item four. We did receive advance notice that the following items items are being pulled for discussion. That's agenda item four point two. Four point three, four point four, four point five, four point six. And four point seven. So as always, appreciate the advance notice. That allows us to have the appropriate staff members present to present. Uh, so we're going to move to item four point two. This is a request for approval and adoption of proposed changes to the schedule of charges and deadlines. This is a request to circulate for public comment. Um, the proposed amendments to the State Bar Rule Regarding Voluntary Resignation. And so we have our chief financial officer, R. Selley Montoya Chico, Chico, uh, present. So. Good to see you. Welcome and uh, please take us to this uh, this item.
Yes, likewise. Thank you. Good morning, good morning, uh, Board of Trustees. Um, I I will summarize um. Really quickly, the schedule of charges and deadlines. This is uh, something that we bring forth on an annual basis, usually at this November meeting. Um, and it is the approval um, for all of our, or or all of our charges that we um. All of our charges that we have and any associated deadlines as applicable. Once this is approved, this is uh, the schedule that gets posted on the website for um, anybody to see the fees that we charge. Um, I just want to highlight a couple of the changes um, that are different this year compared to prior years for the schedule of charges and deadlines. Um, I'm not going to go through every, everything in the agenda, but I do want to highlight certain things. Um, obviously, starting off, we we received the approval um, as a result of uh, Assembly Bill thirty two seventy nine to increase our um. Our mandatory uh, or licensee fees, excuse me. So that's been reflected in here. We have. Um, active attorneys who will pay five ninety eight in terms of their uh, annual licensee fee and an active Z two oh five. So that's reflected in here. Um, I do uh, want to highlight um, as a recommendation from uh, trustee Mark Tony. Um, this is the first year that we have applied a C P I um. Uh, increase to a a lot of the fees that are, that we deemed would, uh, should be eligible to have a C P uh, a C P I applied. Normally, we have a a review of all of the fees every three years and in between the years that we don't have a review, we will apply the C P I and that will be. Um, the process going forward. Um, we did use the latest C P I available uh. From when we were drafting the agenda, which was the August twenty twenty four. So we did apply a two point seven percent increase to. Um, most of the fees and we rounded them to the nearest dollar. There were certain categories that we um, recommended exempting from the C P I increase. Um, which are listed here in in the agenda. Obviously, there's those that we don't have authority over, such as those that are legislature or Supreme Court. The the ones that have authority by the legislature or Supreme Court, we didn't, we didn't increase. Obviously, pass-through fees that we don't anticipate increasing, we didn't apply a C P I as well. Um, the bar exam fees, we did not apply a C P I um, increase as as. You you know, I think it's been communicated in the board that the bar exams will go significant format changes. So we decided not to apply any C P I increase for twenty twenty five for the bar exam fees. Um, as well as some fees that have already been updated and approved during twenty twenty four. They're not going to be subject to the C P I, but they will be next year. Um, we're also uh, requesting uh, to increase uh, the non-payment reinstatement fee. Currently, it's set at one hundred dollars. Um, and the proposal is to increase it to three hundred dollars or double the diluent amount, whichever is uh, lesser. Um, we also want to adopt a new late fee for L L Ps for limited liability partnerships for the renewal fee. Um, we do have a rule that gives us authority um, to to impose a a late fee for L P renewals and we're. We want to go ahead and recommend adopting a one hundred uh, late fee for L P renewals. Um, we also have um, a recommendation to decrease the annual interest rate that we charge in client security. Uh, fund reimbursements. Uh, this Client Security Fund Commission met this September and they recommended that the annual interest rate. That is assessed for reimbursements to the Client Security Fund be reduced from ten percent uh, annually to one percent. We've been charging ten percent for um, many years now. Um, and the recommendation is to decrease it uh, to one percent going forward, effective twenty twenty five going forward. Um, and then finally, um, there's a, as part of this agenda item, there's a request to circulate for public comment. Um, certain amendments to State Bar Rule uh, two point four five, which has to do with voluntary resignations. We currently do not charge a fee for voluntary resignations, but we do spend some staff time processing those requests or those applications. So we want to post for public comment amendments to rule two point four five. Attachment Dean, the agenda is the redline version of what the changes to the rule would be. We also want to recommend adopting a voluntary resignation fee of eighty five dollars. And just to highlight, the fee would not be effective until the amendments to paragraph B of rule two point four five are adopted by the board. And just as a final quick summary, the proposed amendments to rule two point four five paragraph B. It basically amends the, the process to remove the Board of Trustees to approve the application form, which is the current process today. And instead, we would require that anybody who wants to submit for voluntary resignation, that they submit the form that would be available on our website. Submitted and then pay the associate, the associated voluntary resignation fee. So that's what's being put out to public comment. And that's a high level of summary of, of. The key changes in the schedule of charges and deadlines.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by the board? Yes, trustee Tony?
I'm in strong support of the provisions of this. Proposal here. What I'd like to suggest is that we separate. The measures that we are adopting with the decision to put out for comment. Those, I think those are very different things in in a resolution and. I I particularly asked for this to be removed from consent. Both for that reason, but also to make sure that we have a separate vote. On putting this out, the voluntary resignation fees out to a public comment. Which, you know, I was very pleased with Aricelli's summary of both items. But from a procedural standpoint, I just think it's a very different thing to put something out for a public comment and adopting all these other changes.
Aren't, aren't there two resolutions in the item, Aricelli? Or multiple resolutions?
Multiple resolutions. There's.
So you want to vote on the resolution separately, Mark?
The first eight as one, the last two as another. That that was my, what I was thinking. The last two seem to refer to the, of the ten. Refer to placing out for public comment.
Okay, do you want to make a motion? I I'm sorry, Chair, do you want to move on this now or?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the resolution to see, does a resolution reflect that or do we need to do some work something?
We put up the resolution, Devon?
All right, so trustee Tony, does this resolution reflect your, your comments?
What I'd like to do is to move to adopt the first eight clauses. Of this resolution, vote on that. And then I would also. Put a motion to adopt the last two and vote on that. That'd be my recommendation, if that's okay with you.
I mean, I think we could take them on the same vote unless there's, unless it appears to be controversial. If you're okay with that. Because when we talk about like, you know, the first eight, it's harder to make a record of that.
There's ten. I I don't see what, what makes it hard.
Do you think the record is sufficiently clear if we do the first eight resolutions as they appear on the screen now? Have a, have a vote on that and then the last two, is that sufficient for your record?
Give me one second. I'm, I'm looking at. I'm looking at four point two resolution and I see one, two, three, four, five. I see only five clauses. So.
Drafted, it's actually, there's, there's two separate resolutions, right? So the, the first chunk is five prongs on page seven. And then the second resolution is currently five prongs on page eight. And what Chair Tony or image trustee Tony is talking about is. Doing a separate resolution for the last two on page eight.
Thank you for that clarification. You're absolutely correct. It, it, it's a little confusing. There were so many. I stand corrected.
Can you scroll to the right page, Lisa?
I, I'm looking at.
Okay.
Staff report right now.
And if I may clarify, because this item did go to the finance committee first, the first five resolutions are. The resolutions that the finance committee approved and the other five are. Basically essentially the same, but those are the resolutions that the board also needs to adopt.
Right, so. So exactly what Aricelli just mentioned is because this is a back-to-back item. The first portion of the resolution is intended for the finance committee. The finance committee recommends that the board approve. And then the second set of resolutions is identical, but it's now that the board upon the recommendation of finance committee approves the resolution.
Thank you.
Maybe Chair, if you want, we could pass on this one and have staff kind of work on. The structure over lunch or something because I, I hate to take a lot more time. Just figuring out how to construct the resolutions.
Yeah, that, that would be my preference. All right. Okay, thank you to whoever's going to be looking at that over lunch. We're going to. Table four point two, we'll move on to four point three. All right. This is proposed amendments to rules of the state bar regarding the lawyer assistance program. This is a return from public comment and request for adoption, deciding that's being presented by program supervisor Michelle Arment. So we could promote Michelle. All right, welcome.
Hi, thank you. This item is a revision of the lawyer assistance program rules. Since no revision had been done for many years, some of the rules were outdated and inconsistent with the services provided. So these changes are intended to remedy that. One aspect of the proposed changes addresses the LAP Financial Assistance Program to change it from a loan to a grant. After the sixty day comment period, the bar received eight responses. Two took no position, four agreed, although one appeared to be unrelated to this item. One agreed if modified, but based on the comments also appeared to be unrelated to this item and one disagreed. So only two of the comments received provided a narrative related to what was actually in the contents of this item. And both of them focused solely on that part of the rule proposal that would convert the LAP Financial Assistance from a loan to a grant. The comments themselves are, and more detail about it, of course, is in the agenda item, but broadly regarding the concern about the bar's finances. Although, yes, the LAP will need to be conservative with resources like the rest of the bar. The LAP is not funded by general fund licensing fees, which has recently been the subject of all the public discussion around the fee increase. Therefore, a change to the LAP Financial Assistance will not affect the general fund. So the staff does not recommend any further amendment to the rules. And I welcome any comments or questions you might have about this.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I may have a first and a second.
I'll move the item.
Second.
All right, first by trustee Tony, second by trustee Stevens. Get the resolution up. All right, I'm sorry, what was that?
Sorry, I, I missed who made the motion.
It was the first by trustee Tony, second by trustee Stevens.
Thank you.
Great, if we could have a roll call vote.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
So well?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Stallings?
Aye.
Ten eyes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item four point four, this proposed amendments to rules procedure regarding remote appearances in state bar court proceedings. Rules five point one seven, five point one eight, five point one five four. This is a return from public comment and a request for adoption. This is being presented by projects attorney Kathy Scher. Promote Kathy? All right, welcome. Oh, you're still on mute.
There, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Right. The state bar court asks the board to approve for permanent adoption. Changes to rules five point one seven and five point one eight of the rules of procedure. That make it easier for parties to give advance notice when they intend to appear remotely at a trial or evidentiary hearing. These changes have already been in effect since shortly after they were approved for interim adoption in July. And have given the court a much-needed tool to manage its calendar efficiently. Particularly vital with the move to only one courtroom in San Francisco. Two comments were received, one in support and one in opposition. The comment in opposition commented on matters not relevant to this proposal. The comment in support noted that remote appearances improve access to justice, reduce costs and improve efficiency. Approval of the changes for permanent adoption will allow the court and litigants to continue to enjoy the increased efficiencies in calendar, calendar management. That have been possible with the approval for, for permanent adoption of the changes.
Great, thank you. I think this agenda item definitely highlights. The collaborative approach that we try to take with the state bar court. Trying to be responsive to their needs and to improve access of justice. Access to justice for, for all Californians. So thank you for that presentation. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, first by trustee Good, second by trustee Tony. I have a roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
So well?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Stallings?
Aye.
Ten eyes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you to staff and to the state bar court staff for your work on this. Going to item four point five, this is a proposed new rule of procedure regarding vexatious litigants in state bar courts. This is a return from public comment and request for adoption. And this item is being presented by Scher, so welcome back.
Hello again. This item seeks approval following public comments of a new rule of procedure to give the state bar court tools to address vexatious litigants. Vexatious litigants are those who repeatedly file frivolous pleadings or repeatedly attempt to relitigate issues that have been finally decided. The new rule sets out the criteria for designating someone as a vexatious litigant. And puts in place procedures for notice to the party and the opportunity for that party to be heard. Once a party is designated as a vexatious litigant, the court may improve, may impose restrictions. Including potentially a requirement for the party to get pre-filing approval before submitting pleadings to the state bar court for filing. The rule is largely based on the state of California's statute regarding vexatious litigants in superior courts. Nine comments were received on the proposal, two agreed with the rule, four. Four disagreed if it is modified, two disagreed with the rule and one took no position. All of the comments that opposed the proposal and those that agreed with the proposal if modified. Misunderstood the rule to apply to superior court actions and raised concerns related to how that would work. The comments in support noted that this is an important step to protect the court's resources. The state bar court asks for approval of the new rule to give the court a much-needed tool to prevent abuses of process. Conserve court resources and ensure that all litigants will have their cases processed fairly and efficiently.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, if I can have a first and a second.
I'll make some motion.
Okay, I think that was a first by trustee Good, second by trustee Huser. I'm gonna have a roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
So well?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Stallings?
Aye.
Ten eyes, zero nays. Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Kathy, for your work on this. All right, going to item four point six, this is proposed amendments. To state bar rules of procedure, rule five point one three seven relating to the imposition of monetary sanctions. This is a return from public comment and request for approval and submission to the California Supreme Court. Presenting on this are Assistant General Counsel Suzanne Grant and Shelby King. So if we could promote them.
Yes, so at the July twenty twenty three meeting, the board sitting as RAD directed staff to submit the amendments to rule five point one three seven. Of the state bar rules of procedure for public comment for forty five days. Staff presented amendments to rule five point one three seven, which would reduce the recommended sanctions amounts. While retaining the state bar court's authority to deviate from those recommendations up to the statutory maximum in all cases. Additionally, the amendments clarify that installment payments for monetary sanctions will be added to the attorney's annual licensing fees to assist with enforcement. Five public comments were received, three agreed with the proposal and two disagreed. Generally, the commenter supporting the proposal stated that the amendments are a step in the right direction. Alternatively, the commenter who, who provided feedback against the proposal said that the state bar is too easy on attorneys. And that monetary sanctions should be higher. After reviewing the public comments, staff determined that rule five point one three seven does not require further amendment. Staff recommends that the board approves of proposed amendments to rule five point one three seven. Approval may reduce monetary sanctions imposed on attorneys in the discipline system. Because state law requires that monetary sanctions are deposited into the client's security fund, the amendments could result in decreased revenue for CSF. If the board approves the proposal, then staff also requests direction to submit the proposal to the Supreme Court. For their approval pursuant to Business and Professions Code, section sixty eighty six point thirteen. If the Supreme Court also approves the rule, then staff requests an effective date of either July first of twenty twenty five. Or sixty days after Supreme Court approval, whichever is later, to afford time for state bar court staff to implement the changes.
All right, I'm sorry, I think I misspoke. I believe I said Ms. Grant was also presenting, but I believe it's just Shelby. So Shelby, thank you for that. Any questions or comments from the board? Yes, either trustee Good or vice chair Cisneros?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment briefly that I think this is a really critical and material change. That came out of the ad hoc commission and the disciplines work. And so I wholeheartedly support it. That's it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or may I have a motion? Any other questions or comments or may I have a motion?
Happy to make the motion.
All right, can I? I'm sorry, was that trustee Tony?
Yes, second.
All right, uh, first by trustee Good, second by trustee Tony, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Barahona.
Aye.
Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Cisneros.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Grande.
Aye.
Huser.
Aye.
So well.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo, not present, Steven, I'm sorry, Stallings.
Aye.
Ten eyes, zero knees, motion carries.
Thank you. On item four point seven, this is a new state bar rule three point one triple zero and proposed amendments to California Rules of Court Rule nine point two three relating to the implementation of an offer and compromise program. So return from public comment and request for adoption of rule three point one triple zero. And this is approval submission of rule nine point two three to the California Supreme Court. Look, we have two presenters, we have our CFO, this Montoya Chico and Suzanne Grant.
Um, good morning. These were um, two rules that were submitted for public comment at the uh, September board meeting. Um, that related to the offer and compromise debt collection program. Um, the first rule, the new state bar rule, um, was necessary to implement the program as it provided uh, a means for attorneys to uh, obtain debt relief outside of the state bar court process that was in the current rules. And rule nine point two three, um, proposed amendments to rule nine point two three was a California Supreme Court rule. Um, amendments were necessary to give the state bar authority to compromise money judgments such that attorneys participating in this debt relief program who had money judgments, um, we could file those satisfactions outside of state bar court. Um, we only received six public comments, um, uh, we had four that agreed, uh, two disagreed. Only one of the disagreeing attorneys submitted um, information, just generally opposing the rule, saying that um, the cost would be too high. Um, so after considering those comments, well, this rule is now back to the board, the rules are now back to the board. Um, we seek approval and adoption of the new rule of the state bar three point um, one zero zero zero. And uh, we also seek uh, authorization for staff to submit the proposed amendments of the California Rule of Court nine point two three for the Supreme Court for approval.
Thank you. And Ms. Montoya Chico, did you have anything that you wanted to add on this item?
No, Suzanne covered.
All right, perfect. All right, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, you have the resolution up on the screen, uh, can I have a first and a second?
So moved.
Well, second.
All right, first by trustee Tony, second by trustee Barahona, can I have a roll call vote, please?
I'm, I believe, was that Barahona or Grande, I'm sorry.
I thought it was Barahona.
I'm sorry, I heard it wrong. Thank you. Um, okay, Barahona.
Aye.
Buena Ventura. I do not see trustee Buena Ventura in attendance. Cisneros.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Grande.
Aye.
Huser.
Aye.
So well.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo, not present, Stallings.
Aye.
That's nine eyes, zero knees, motion carries.
All right, thank you, Ms. Grant, for your work on this. Okay, we're gonna go back to item four point two while it's still fresh in our mind. Our ever capable or secretary has gone through and revised the resolution, so I'm gonna recall four point two, and if I could ask uh, Louisa to put up the new revised resolution. All right, Louisa, can you just walk us through what you changed on this resolution?
Sure, so there are now two motions. The first motion relates to the schedule of charges and deadlines, and so Devon, if you scroll down a bit. And that's where that first motion ends, and then the second motion relates to rule two point four five. And this is to make available for public comment, rule two point four five, so this would be the second motion.
All right, so thank you for that, and then trustee Tony, does that uh, accurately reflect what you wanted to see in this?
Thank you very much. It sure does. I would like to move the first motion.
Second.
Right. Okay, first by trustee Tony, second by trustee Stevens, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Barahona.
Aye.
Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Cisneros.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Grande.
Aye.
Huser.
Aye.
So well.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo, not present, Stallings.
Aye.
Ten eyes, zero knees, motion carries.
Great, and if you could put the resolution back up on the screen uh, for the second motion as to four point two.
I would like to move the second motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, first by trustee Tony, second by trustee Stevens, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Barahona.
Aye.
Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Cisneros.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Grande.
Aye.
Huser.
Aye.
So well.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo, not present, Stallings.
Aye.
Ten eyes, zero knees, motion carries.
All right, thank you again to Louisa for getting that done. All right, I think that concludes all of the items that were pulled off of consent. So we're gonna go to the remaining items um, that are on consent, which are items four point one, four point eight, four point nine, four point one zero, four point one one, four point one two, four point one three, four point one four, four point one five, four point one six, and four point one seven. Can I have a motion to adopt those previously stated um, agenda items?
So moved.
It's already out, second.
All right, first by trustee uh, Tony, second by trustee So well, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Barahona.
Aye.
Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Cisneros.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Grande.
Aye.
Huser.
Aye.
So well.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo, not present, Stallings.
Aye.
Ten eyes, zero knees, motion carries.
All right.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes.
Uh, i- i- if I may be recognized. I um, I want to give a brief explanation as to why I requested these items to come off of consent. Reason one is, I think when we put something out for public comment and it comes back, it's important to acknowledge that there was public comment. And just to give an idea of, you know, where it fell, I think that's important. I I think we should let people who take the time, give public comment, know that uh, we heard their comment. Two, um, the vote we took previously was to place the item on the adj- uh, out for public comment. It was not a vote um, to um, on the merits of the item. And I'd like to get a, uh, I think it's important to have a separate vote on the merits, just in case. Um, you know, there was something we didn't bring up. It 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 it's a good thing, I think, for decision making to have a motion uh, of rules change to be discussed more than once. Many uh, decision making bodies have something called a second reading, okay, where where something is voted on more than once. I think that's a good practice. Um, there was one item on today's agenda that was um, on the consent to go out um, to to go out for public comment on consent. There were other items to approve with, you you know, um, on the uh, consent that have come back from public comment. We don't wanna run the risk of a rules change that that never has any discussion, cuz it went out for public comment on consent. And then it got adopted on consent, so those, I just wanted to, I I thought my fellow trustees deserved an explanation from me. Thank you very much, Chair.
Absolutely, and staff, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but if um, an item gets put on consent generally, um, it's because it comes out of the um, out of the committee, oh, the committee uh, goes to adopt it, especially in these um, uh, items that are put out for public comment, so there is that discussion, and certainly trustee Tony, um, it is within the discretion of each member of this body to pull off uh, an item that they believe further discussion is warranted, so thank you for uh, your continuing care, uh, concern for the state bar and for these various items, so. All right, um, it is twelve twenty eight, so instead of going into uh, RAD, I'm going to um, take a recess until uh, approximately one o'clock, so trustee can go grab some lunch. Feel free to uh, eat at your workstation um, as needed, so we'll see everybody back about one o'clock. All right, we are back on the record, we're recording. Um, we are gonna take up item five, uh, which is the Board of Trustees sitting as Regulation and Discipline Committee. Welcome back to everybody after lunch. Uh, we'll try and like, go through these uh, items in expeditious manner. But first, we have item five point one, which is our twenty twenty four uh, annual discipline report, review and approval. And this item is uh, being presented by our Deputy Chief of Mission, Deputy Chief of Mission, uh, Ms. Shane, so welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Georgia and I will co-present. Let me show my slides first.
All right, welcome Mr. Carron.
Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon, the Board of Trustees. Uh, today we will present some of the highlighted results in the annual discipline report.
Hello and thank you for calling Experian. As part of our
Okay, for for a few uh, newer board members, I want to provide the context of the report. The state bar is required to create and submit the annual discipline report every year uh, by November thirtieth to describe the performance and the condition of the uh, attorney disciplinary system. Most of the components you you see here uh, is are relevant to OCTC's work. But some of the uh, disciplinary uh, aspects also touches upon the work conducted by the state bar uh, court regulation and the Office of uh, Professional Support and Client Protection. I would highlight, I would like to highlight the timeframe of this report. This is a, uh, this is based on fiscal year twenty twenty four, uh, which is from uh, July first twenty twenty three to uh, June thirtieth uh, twenty twenty four. Uh, the reason I want to highlight the timeframe, because in our presentation, we will link the annual discipline report, some of the reporting results with the quarterly dashboard, which is based on the quarterly timeframe. So I want to highlight that difference here. Then this report is long, over uh, one hundred pages. Uh, but the staff made intent efforts to provide a short narrative, twelve pages, uh, to highlight some of the uh, performances of OCTC and demographics of disciplinary attorneys. Uh, the major part, the longest part of th- this report is the fifteen statutorily required tables, which provide a lot more detailed uh, description of the uh, uh, disciplinary system. Then the appendixes provide some um, explanations of the programs, diversion program and rule two two oh one program, and some details about terminology, um, attorney discipline system process and methodology. I I would like to um, highlight diversion program here, because it's a newly added uh, appendix this year. In general, our goal is not to change the report too much year by year, um, so that we can maintain the consistency of reporting and to avoid unnecessary speculation about, you know, why we report this metric this year, not uh, some other metrics another year, so consistency is one of the goals we are trying to pursue when we report. Uh, uh, when we uh, create this annual discipline, the report. Then George will walk you through uh, some of the key performance um, highlights.
So this uh, this is a report on our inventory, um, this is one of the things that we're required to report on in the ADR. And as you'll see, there are two things I want to highlight here. First, you'll see that the number of cases opened in twenty twenty four, and this is for all cases. All types of cases, which the legislature requires that we report on in this table. It's not limited to um, incoming disciplinary complaints from complainants. It includes, for example, criminal conviction matters and a host of other matters that we handle. Um, but you can see that our workload essentially